All right, it is September twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-three. It is six o'clock P M. Be calling the Provo City Planning Commission meeting to order. I will start with a roll call and the commissioners will state their names. And if they have any conflicts, we'll start with Commissioner Knudsen.
Robert Knudsen, no conflicts.
Reline Wallin, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Jeff Whitlock, no conflicts.
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Jonathan Hill, no conflicts.
Melissa Kendall, no conflicts.
Andrew South, no conflicts.
Barbara De Soto, no conflicts.
All right, uh, let's start with the pledge of allegiance. Uh, Commissioner Jensen will begin that with for us.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Although this is a public hearing, only the presenters and those invited by the commission will speak or ask questions unless otherwise invited by myself, the chair. So please wait to speak until called upon by the chair. When speaking, please be sure to speak into the microphone. Um, this is a, this is recorded hearing, uh, it's broadcast on YouTube. So speak in the microphone so that the record is clear. Please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also, please limit side conversations as they interfere interfere with the audio recording. Uh, if you need to have a side conversation, please step out of chambers. Please do not attempt to interrupt or speak over people. Intimidating or threatening speech or behavior will not be tolerated at any time. Please refrain from clapping or cheering during the hearing. Uh, I say this, I, as, as chair, I have a very high vested interest in allowing everybody an opportunity to speak. I will get to you. You will have time to speak. Um, you'll be on equal footing with any other public member presenting with the same amount of time. If side conversations do need to have to, like, like I said, feel free to step outside. We also have a planning staff available that could address, uh, concerns that may come up in the meantime. Uh, as far as agenda items go, we have. We'll begin with item number one. Development Services requests ordinance tax amendments to chapter fifteen point two zero point zero six zero design standards. This is a citywide application. A staff member Hannah Salz will be presenting.
Thank you. Is there a way to move the slides forward? I don't, the computer's not on. This is a fairly straightforward adjustment in the same vein as the last round of, uh, water wise landscape updates I brought to you a few months ago. When we took that to the council, as the other departments were doing their review of the proposed amendment, development, or, uh, Public Works had some concerns about our existing policies about artificial turf that were adopted several years ago. So we were asked to come back and revisit those in a second round. You can think of this as like a part two finishing that up. The. It's not, oh, there we go. The amendments are fairly straightforward. We are simply prohibiting artificial turf, except in athletic fields and public recreation spaces where real turf grass wouldn't make sense. The only addition you see down there at the bottom in blue is continuing point three from the struck list, or point four, sorry, that outdoor carpet shall not be used in landscaping. We don't want green carpet in place of a lawn. Uh, the entire point is stormwater permeability, reducing these urban heat islands that create hazardous environments for, uh, trees and wildlife. We want to make sure that this is as spongy and absorbent and as temperature moderated as we can get as a city. And unfortunately, artificial turf has not been found to help us get there. It has ecologically roughly the same effect as simply paving over your lawn with, with loose gravel or stones, which we also do not permit. Do you have any questions or concerns?
Uh, yeah, I had one. Uh. In the overview part of the staff report, uh, there's the last paragraph of the overview section, there's mention of a reasonable accommodation process. I'm wondering, is that, is that process, is it codified? Is it, is it in the ordinances?
It's an administrative process. Yes, it's something that the legal team already has in place. It's a well-oiled machine. Our zoning enforcement staff are already trained to have this discussion with the resident if they feel like that resident would qualify for an exemption.
Go ahead.
Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but it is okay to cover a yard with rocks, is it not? I mean, if you have other plants and shrubs in there?
We do require that minimum forty percent vegetated coverage, but yes, otherwise you could.
So why can't, um, why can't the artificial turf fall under the same category as the rocks and, um, be in that sixty percent?
This is one of those where it's. It is a ground cover solution that a long time ago was pitched as being more waterwise. And it's, it's simply not because of these other harmful effects. And you're right that we do allow other alternatives that might be addressed in a future code update. But what we've been asked to address in this round specifically is the artificial turf. If addressing rock coverage is something that planning commission would like to talk about, I could bring that back at a later item.
No, I'm not trying to say we shouldn't have rock coverage. I'm just not convinced that artificial turf isn't a better alternative than a weed-covered lawn or, or anything else. Like, I've seen it done poorly and I've seen it done well. And like, I, every time I go to Sam's Club, for example, I think it looks a million times better. And their trees are probably not going to die anymore with the artificial turf than they did with people running over the grass. So I see it as a, as a, I still see it as a good alternative and I'm not convinced that it needs to be Xed. So that's why I was hoping you would.
From what I'm.
Give me how it's different from rocks because it feels the same to me.
That's how it was originally perceived when it was codified to allow this back in two thousand nineteen. In the intervening years, what our urban forestry team and what our stormwater team has seen is that it. Even rocks, the layers get bunched up, water pools, it doesn't go through. Um, it, people do still also try to plague and release pets, children to use this as an outdoor space. But you will even find from manufacturers, they will say that you have to hose the grass off because it's so hot sitting in the sun. Picture like a plastic tarp in our hundred degree summer days. Uh, so there are some differences from the rocks. You don't have those problems with rocks.
Rocks are still hot?
They are, but no one's sending their toddler or dog out to play on rocks. And people don't install or ask you to hose down your rocks before you use them in your yard for the day.
And any other questions for the planning staff commissioners? Commissioner Kimball?
And that's true for newer type turfs also. Like, I'm sure there are newer products that might be better, more permeable and have better outcomes. Is that not true or?
It depends on the price point. And from what our staff in the field has seen, they, they tend not to be installed very well, these artificial ones. I understand that it's a very complicated, there's a lot of nuance when we're talking about these gray spaces of, of water use and heat islands. I understand that there are trade-offs with this. Thank you for acknowledging that.
I, I have a question just around, a basic question around the applicability of this. Um, so obviously this is part of, uh, title fifteen of the code, the land use development. Is this specifically applicable to net new developments or is it a develop to everyone? Like, if I wanted to go put like a little bit of turf in my backyard, would that be prohibited by this?
Existing landscapes are grandfathered, or are grandfathered in. If you had put in your artificial turf last year, it would be all right. But it, this would apply going forward to all landscapes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, with that, we're, we're gonna, appreciate your presentation. Uh, is there any district representatives? From any of the five districts present that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna turn this over and open the public hearing portion of comments. We have a long agenda tonight, so please come forward. If I see a gap with nobody coming forward, we're gonna keep on moving. So, uh, take a seat. If, if you're, if there's multiple people, take a seat on the front row so we know that there's pending comments. Go ahead and state your name and residence.
Stan Jensen, I live in Provo in District One. It just sounds like this is an overly broad prohibition. If there are concerns when it's not installed right or when it's a certain type of product, it would seem that we would allow people with proper installation and the right types of products to use this product. I have a few neighbors who have this. I don't see a problem with it. I'm not an expert. I have no special background, but I would prefer that our prohibitions be limited to cases where it's really causing a problem. Uh, that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else lining up for comments, so we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of hearing and then we'll discuss it amongst ourselves. Commissioners? Go ahead, Jeff, uh, Commissioner Whitlock.
Um, yeah, I, 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 I understand what the, is trying to be accomplished here. And I think for sort of like large new developments or commercial developments, I can understand. But I, I think it's, I kind of agree that's overly broad prohibition. I think I've seen many tasteful and very nice applications of turf in private property in people's backyards, and I just feel like it's overreach.
I agree. Um, if I were to find a happy medium between this, I would just suggest that it just have that limit of it's in the other sixty percent. So you have to have twenty percent planted green, um, landscape. But, um, I think artificial turf should be categorized and allowed under six B in section fifteen point two zero point zero six zero in the design standards. I think it should, it should still be allowed to be there. It, I feel like it is permeable, maybe not as permeable, but it has permeability. It's certainly not as, um, hot as black asphalt or rocks. And I think it looks better than a neglected yard, so I would like to see it remain in the code as an option. And if somebody wants to enforce on one that is done poorly or, or looks bad, then that can be something they do. You can add language for how it has to be maintained or installed according to standards, but I think restricting it is a mistake.
And I just want to jump in and add that we just purchased our family home and my father has put turf in the entire front yard. So my home has artificial turf and doesn't pose a problem of heat or anything like that. The worst thing for us is, uh, bushes sometimes get little prickly things in it and you can't get rid of those, but unless you blow them. But I guess it was grandfathered in because I'd be in violation, I guess. So it's great.
I, I would agree. I, exactly what you said, Lisa, you said that very well. I think it should mimic, it should be in the same category as rocks. And there are applications where this could be beneficial and keep people from having very unsightly things and especially in small places. So for example, there might be park strips or certain places where it's hard to get water to. And in that case, you could have it look nice and not have to get water there. So we have a side of our house where nothing can grow. There's too much shade between us and the house next to us. And I would love, I have rocks there now, but I would love to have turf because then it would look nicer than the rocks, so.
So I have a different opinion here. Um, one of the things I love about this item is that it was introduced twenty nineteen. We've had some time with it and it's determined that it hasn't done what it was purported to do in terms of being friendly as a, you know, reducing the amount of water needed, et cetera. So I, I appreciate the fact that we have had a, you know, a positive look at it and, and it's not doing what we thought it was. And so we have staff coming back saying that, hey, we should revisit this. In preparation for it, I also looked at the science a little bit and have not been convinced that this is really great for us. Like, we've talked about aesthetics, so I think there is probably an argument there for aesthetics, but in terms of what it does for our natural environment, it's actually harmful. So for me, I think that's a, that's enough of a negative to say, let's not do it unless we have a reason to do it, so.
I, I agree with that. We have a lot of waterways and a lot of, you know, we have a lake right there and there's a lot of, we often don't know what the effect long-term will be on those things, but we do know microplastics are really bad for our native species and things which are already under threat from other human intervention, so for what it's worth.
Um, I, I, I hear that point. I think it's a good point. Um, what I would say though, and this is what happens a lot, is like you codify something so strongly and then technology changes quite fast. And then I know that there, this is an issue that the companies are aware of. And so, you know, I Google non-toxic turf and there's a lot of new technologies and things that are coming out that like address these problems. And so I think the market tends to adapt pretty fast. And so I, I don't know. I think, I think it's a problem for sure. Uh, it's, if, to me, the worst offenders would be the people who are grandfathering in, not the people who are, you know, buying the newest and latest turf that are addressing these concerns. So that's, would be another variable to consider.
Go ahead.
I, um, would think that, yeah, the ones that are still allowed to, those are, if we're saying we're only gonna allow sport fields, but not a ten by ten patch in somebody's yard, is that really gonna make a measurable difference compared to the ones that are still allowed? And I feel like if you limit it and you put restrictions on how it's to be done, then you, you've already put some control over doing it well, doing it with the best practices, doing it, um, um, in a way that will limit the impact that science says it has. Cause of course, we don't want to make things worse, but I like Jeff's point, Mr. Whitlock's point that there's, however many are already there are going to be the worst offenders because the technology hasn't caught up.
I'm curious with the breakdown, like what other alternatives we might be able to propose, cause under six A, uh, yeah, I just don't think artificial turf grass belongs in the same category. It's just, to me, it just doesn't.
I agree it shouldn't be in six A.
But as for, for B and D and, and the other ones, I, I'm open to, to movement.
Right, I feel like it can be take slashed out where it's slashed out on six B, but then added to the list of what could be there in the non-vegetated areas. Like, we're categorizing it as, as bark or a ground cover, right? We're not categorizing it as the, the planted area. And that's where I think the change should be made. It's not in the same category as grass or shrubs. It's in the same category as bark or rocks. And so it should, it should fall under those restrictions in my mind. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah. And what, what percentage is that then with the?
Um, I think it would be sixty percent because that, you have to have, in A, it says living vegetation shall cover a minimum of forty percent. So then the remaining undealt area would be sixty percent that could be in ground cover or of any variety in my mind.
What if it was even more restricted? What if it was, say, couldn't it be more than forty percent? Something like that to try to address the issues with heat islands, et cetera, et cetera, and permeability, those kinds of things, just restrict even further how much land you can cover with it? Would that address some of the concerns that are had?
You're saying like a separate requirement just for the turf? Because I feel like if you say forty percent for any of those, that's sixty percent that has to be planted, that's a greater burden.
Right, no, for the turf.
So turf has its own special restriction that you can't have more than X.
X percent.
That would make sense to me because I think this belongs in limited applications, places where it's hard to get water and it's a better solution than rocks where the weeds come through so quickly and it just gets unsightly very fast.
Like, like, I'm, I'm glad you brought up, like, I can see where you'd want it in a shade place where it's otherwise, uh, ungrowable. Um, that makes sense to me.
Or, or a park strip where you.
Or a park.
It's very difficult to get water to it.
Yeah.
You know?
Um, I'm, and I, I do kind of lean, personally, I kind of lean more towards, uh, Commissioner Hill's thought of maybe.
Yeah, I think maybe a middle road here is to say some sort of limitation on the, the extent of it, right? Um, if our concerns are, you know, effects on the environment, heat islands, those kinds of things, permeability, then restricting the extent of the land more stringently than we do grass, for example, um, helps several of those. And then requiring certain install, installation standards as well as perhaps types that don't release microplastics can, can address the others, right? And so we're not doing a blanket ban in that case, but we are making sure that these relevant concerns are being addressed. Yeah, see, sorry, my mic is really low. Uh, it seems that like the one, the ones that are made of like the, the shredded tires with, that probably popylene and nylon are like the worst. You could just outlaw that class and there's new ones that basically are plant-based that are made off, made of, of, um, different types of plant materials. There's also ones that you like, use like sand and pea gravel. Like, there's other alternatives, I think, very much address the environmental concerns because I, that's my biggest, I agree with that point of like, basically the microplastics getting into the water table or running off and getting into our lakes and stuff. So that feels like there's a lot of negative externality, so it's no longer purely just a private property issue. Um, but I feel like you can address that with this ordinance without just categorically banning the, the thing.
Interestingly, I think that those things you just described are listed in one, two, three, four, five of the subsection of D. It says artificial turf grass used for landscaping may not include rubber infill in a yard adjacent to a public, you know, like it talks about the rubber infill. It talks, so like, it does already point to those differences.
Anyone else?
I guess I'm curious, that was already included in the strike, struck out part, which I didn't read. Um, if staff has a comment on whether that didn't work or what was the issue?
Yeah, can we recall Hannah? I, speaking to, to his question and then also, um, did, were there instances where we found that, that there was just this mass watering that just wasn't accomplishing the effect of xeriscaping? Cause it was, it was like moved into the theme, oh, let's accomplish xeriscate, but then when you find it's in water, I'm, I'm curious about that in addition to what you brought up.
I'm not sure about the exact water numbers. I would have to ask our water teams. I don't think they've tracked the exact properties where it's happened. But it is good that you brought up the installation standards because that was addressed when this was put in place in two thousand and eighteen, as was pointed out. But the majority of cases that are accrued, you know, in the field have not been installed properly. Most people don't check these, uh, don't always check these landscape codes as they're retrofitting their homes. We don't require a building permit. We have no way as staff to verify that it's being installed correctly. And if our zoning enforcement teams are driving past a, uh, an artificial turf park strip, they're not trained to be able to recognize whether it's done well. Uh, we have found that enforcing those installation standards was nearly impossible. And I should note that this, uh, this recommendation came from Development Services, of course, our zoning enforcement, but also, uh, Public Works Power and Parks Department all unanimously recommended just getting rid of turf. When we asked what middle grounds we could reach, what they recommended, they all said, just don't, just get rid of it.
I have a question. Um, was there any like quantifying of like damage to drain pipes or anything like that? Or is it just the, like, wh- what did they describe, Public Works in particular, about what were problems with that? I guess, what did those areas of the city talk about that were concerned?
Public Works had said that they had not seen it have the desired effect on water use reduction. I don't know what those numbers look like, but reporting from them. The stormwater teams were also particularly concerned about microplastics, which came up as well, which you don't get from the rocks. That was Public Works' main concern. Um, from parks, it was these heat islands, especially as we're seeing them in park strips or, or grass tips where people are trying to take their dogs or their pets. Um, it's, it's not a safe environment always for, for the people that parks most tries to represent. Our energy department was particularly concerned about the damage to trees because energy, of course, houses our urban forestry team. They are also concerned about the water permeability and runoff, as was Public Works. Those were the main concerns.
So, so someone would be installing, you know, turf, it, it, or maybe they put trees to meet some landscape requirement, but they install turf and it kills the trees, just thus defeating the.
That had been seen very commonly, especially in park strips by our urban forestry team. A lot of the trees that they were calling out to have replaced were in xeriscate yards where people had simply stopped watering the area as much as the trees needed or in these artificial park strips where it was creating this radiated heat back up at the underside of the leaves that's not designed to be able to take that heat. That evaporatranspirative loss is just expedited when you put heat sources underneath the tree.
Go ahead.
What if we, in the interest of time tonight, say we would like to see, um, this be presented in a way that treats turf as a, a, a non-living landscaping instead of, instead of grass? Like, I think we're all agree that it's, it's not in the same category as grass and shrubs. And something that addresses the things we've talked about and maybe continue it for, um, something that meets the concerns we've discussed so that we don't have to sit here solving ecological problems right now.
Yeah, so like something not quite a hundred percent banned, but a, just a least restricted.
Cause we want, I think we all agree that we don't want the negative effects that everyone's finding, but we also agree that it, it's enforceability citywide and it's, it's measurable effect citywide is probably not enough to have it be banned. I don't know. Jonathan has something.
I just have a quick question. When you say park strips, what do you mean by that?
I mean, that's for, no, technically the seven foot, now the seven foot strip of grass between the curb and the sidewalk.
And the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Which is technically, it's owned by the homeowner, correct?
It is owned by the homeowner, but the trees are city property, hopefully.
Yeah, yeah, cause that's what, that's confusing. Yeah. Cause I think, just to go back to my earlier comment, like, I think it makes a lot of sense for like these kind of pseudo-public spaces for public parks, for brand-new large developments, for commercial developments, all makes sense. Where I just feel like it's overstepping city authorities, like in my backyard, if I wanna put a turf, like little circle surrounded by trees and shrubs, like, I just feel like there's, that's the argument where I just, like, with private property, I just don't feel like the, the cons overweight the private property, right, concerns? Following up on that, I would love to see come back some of those specific examples you were talking about where trees were dead or something like that, to really see the effects of this. And I'm curious, why make an exception for athletic fields? If we're concerned about heat islands and water usage, et cetera, it seems like a ten by ten spot in someone's backyard with bushes, it's way less of an effect than a hundred-yard football field. Also, increasing amount of evidence suggests that they're very bad for athletes. They're much more likely to cause knee injuries and other stuff like that. So, I mean. So I'd like that issue revisited as well.
Okay, I'm, I'm sensing, uh, there's some movement towards continuing this item for further study. If we're doing that, I, I wanna, do we, do we feel that we've given, uh, staff members all enough items to revisit concrete? I wanted to make sure we do that.
I'm so sorry, one more thing. Also, rooftop decks in the development, uh, that I live in or lived in, you know, that's a very, uh, commonly put on rooftop decks. It's a very nice amount of rooftop decks, so just something to be aware of. I'm not sure where that would fall and how we've written this.
Yeah, and just, as a side note, I've seen them at like restaurants and little outdoor dining areas.
Make sure you allow for how you want that to go as well.
Yeah. Any, anyone else wanna give some specific items for, to task staff with?
So what I think we, we liked was not treating it like it's a plant. Um, maybe applying some sort of percentage requirement to it and treating it like it's a ground cover. Um, and then maybe having some sort of standards written in there, whether they're easy to enforce or not, just so that if there was a problem, you could say it wasn't built to the right standard. Is that?
Yeah, that's fine. I would also add in a provision for shaded areas where, where, uh, things have been ungrowable.
So, um, following up on Commissioner Hill's, um, question about examples of where this has been damaging, like, we can say, what about? like, we can say, what about these conditions? I think we should have that looked at. But if all of our, all of our staff services are categorically saying, we don't want it, it might be nice to have that come back again because I'm not sure even in these, you know, micro situations or how that might go well, I'm not sure that that's really something that we ought to entertain completely if, if our entire services staff is saying, we don't want it. So maybe some more information or evidence on why that, you know, why they're saying that we don't want this. Like, there may be more there to it, so.
Right, because if they're, if they have numbers that show the microplastics and if they even could tell us, you know, if they're all coming from an old high school field that got redone and it's, it's over and done with, then maybe those numbers don't matter. But if, I don't know how they find where the sources of those contaminants, but that would be helpful.
I want to say, uh, this is like, as a role as a, as a public citizen, I, I give, uh, quite a bit deference to development services and city staff. You, you all are the experts in areas that I don't have expertise in. As chairman of the planning commission, I, I give deference to my, the concerns of my, my co-commissioners. And, um, so I hope, I hope you kind of understand, but I'm trying to balance things that where I, I recognize, what's unanimity among staff citywide? And then trying to address, uh, the concerns of commissioner members.
Absolutely, and part of our staff's job is to balance these concerns from these appointed officials representing the public and staff's expert knowledge. So we're just threading the needle on that and I'll bring back some more information or some other alternatives.
Okay, is, is there a, a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Well, I, do you want me to state it?
Yeah, go, go ahead.
I, um, make a motion that we continue item number one, development services request ordinance text amendments to chapter fifteen point two zero point zero six zero design standards, um, citywide application. With, with the, I don't know if we need to state a date for whenever development services is ready to come back with some of the things that we asked for.
I'll be herding cats with four different departments. It might be better to give me a bit more of an open calendar.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm not setting a date. I'm saying whenever it works out.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Is there a second on the motion?
Well, second.
Okay, uh, vote on that, um. Yeah, I'll start with Commissioner Knutson.
Aye.
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 Although, aye. Motion to continue, passes unanimously. Uh, the votes. Nine, zero. Uh, item number two. Jake Black requests project plan approval for a new industrial warehouse in the PIC plant industrial commercial zone located at twenty-two, I'm sorry, twenty-seven, twenty-five South Mountain Vista Parkway, Spring Creek neighborhood. Nancy Robinson presenting.
Hello.
Hello.
Um, okay, so, um, with this, um, study or this proposed plan, so it's currently zoned as a planned industrial commercial. The lot is point nine two acres and the building is approximately seventeen thousand square feet in space, which covers about forty-two percent of the lot. The required amount of parking for this use is one space per six hundred square feet of gross floor area, which would require twenty-nine spaces for the proposed project. Um, but the applicant provided a parking demand study and would like to request a reduction of the nine stalls. In the report, I had put that there was no issues that had been raised by the neighborhood. There was just one comment that was raised at a, um, neighborhood meeting. Uh, the question was asked whether or not this was a clean operation. And, um, the applicant responded that yes, it can be dirty, but this operation will be clean. Everything will be contained inside. There won't be any particulates released. They will all be caught in dust collectors inside the building. There shouldn't be a lot of noise. There are only five to six customers a day. They'll pull in the building and they'll unload their truck. There won't be a lot of traffic. So, um, let's see. This is the proposed, um, layout with the nine stalls. There's only one adjacent property that has been developed and all the other surrounding properties are vacant. The proposed use is, uh, consistent with the surrounding uses. The only thing, let's see, the parking study indicates the developers' unique use for the warehouse will only require parking for three employees. And the intended clients, uh, drive through the warehouse, drop off their work and leave the premises. So nine spaces would be more than sufficient, is what the parking study says. Staff is comfortable with this, requested parking reduction because of actual work history and demonstrated parking demand for this specific business. Additionally, there are not any nearby residential uses that overflow. Parking could impact. There are several undeveloped properties in the area and because of the location, being a block east of the rail line, they don't anticipate that that will change. So this is a rendering of the elevations and the proposed, um, landscape plan. This is a actual photo of the site. Do you have any questions for me?
Hi, I have a question. Um, oh, just to know, I should have said this on the previous, um, item. Uh, our, our applicants have fifteen minutes for their presentation. I'm, I'm gonna do it right now. Um, our applicants have fifteen minutes for their presentation. When the time's up, you'll hear a ding and the microphone is muted. Following your presentation, if we have questions, we'll invite you to come forward at the time. Yeah, I just want to know, uh, staff member Salz was under fifteen minutes and same with, uh, staff member Robinson. Um, Robinson. All right. Oh, that's true. Yeah, okay. Uh, yeah, my question was, uh, do we have, uh, what's their current address or current location? Can we? I, I want to see what their old operation was like and what kind of parking and.
I, I don't know what, um, is current addresses. That might be.
That's why I'll, I'll ask them when they come up to, to give that.
Yeah, they're not in Provo, so I think there is Springville, but he could tell you.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for staff? Go ahead.
Just one question. Uh, this is for a specific use. What's, uh, staff's, I mean, based on your recommendation, are there any thoughts about change of use down the road? And I mean, if this property got sold or whatever, and now we have nine stalls and we have very limited space to just have additional parking, so want to convert this into something else. I mean, this is a steel building, pretty easy to convert that into other use cases. Was that considered? I mean, is that an issue we need to be looking at?
It was considered, but because of its location and not really adjacent to, uh, residential, there wasn't a concern for overflow parking to, you know, approach on that. So we did consider that.
I just wanted to follow up on that. So what you're saying is it does carry forward. So if the property is sold and there's a different use, the parking carries with it?
Yes.
Maybe a clarifying way to answer that question is, I, I think we're supportive of this request. Considering the history of this site, um, the fact that this was, you know, when a, an environmental cleanup site, this is a huge step forward. Um, it's putting the land back to productive use that hasn't been that way for decades and creates value that hasn't existed. So that's a positive thing. This specific request is a little bit unique and it does limit the future opportunity for this site. So at some point, if this is granted and the owner decided or some subsequent owner needed to sell the property, it could limit the type of use that could go into this facility in the future. But I think, I think we recognize that and we think that that's a worthwhile, um, risk because it puts this property to use. I think Mr. Jarvis has made a, a good attempt to try to do something good and to bring some value into our community, so.
Okay, two things. One, uh, just state your name and.
I'm sorry, Keith Mori, I'm the economic development director.
Okay, and then two, uh, uh, that, that, that would come into play with, with a change of use would come into play at, at a business license application, correct?
Exactly. Yeah, it may be that they, they, we, we couldn't approve the business license, so the sale actually wouldn't, couldn't go through or, or might be conditional on their being able to get a business license. And once they found out that they couldn't, they wouldn't be able to go through or decided not to go through with the purchase of the property.
Does the business license issuing, um, actually have the ability to say, to determine how much parking is required when something's been given an exception? You know, like, the, the numbers in the, in the code say you're supposed to have X numbers of parking. And if we, if we approve something with a reduced parking requirement and somebody else comes in, how do they say, oh, we only need four, so we're fine? Like, how, how do they determine that? What formula does a business license office use to, to do those exceptions?
Parking requirements, the exempted, your exemption you're going to require a potentially grant is for this business in this scenario, right?
It's not, it's not building specific?
At this loca-, it's at this location for, for the project that, that is being submitted to you. At some point in the future, if that were to change, part of their due diligence would be that they're going to put a new business in there and that new business is going to require more parking that this site doesn't have. And so potentially we wouldn't grant the business license and the sale might not go through.
You wouldn't just say, oh, we can park on the street and let it go because it's in a neighborhood and we don't care? Like, who, at what point does, does somebody say, like, if they're not changing the footprint of the building and they don't need to go through this, this process of getting approval for anything and they're just basically putting a new sign on the building, how do you let, how do you regulate those things?
All business licenses are circulated to several city departments. It's circulated to a planner who has to sign off on it. We check to see if that business has sufficient parking. We look at the parking demand for that business. And if there's not enough onsite parking, we deny the business license.
Thank you. I think that's what all of us were trying to ask. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, uh, did you have something else you wanted to add? Okay, thank you, staff member Robinson. With that, we'll, we'll move on to, uh, this is the Spring Creek neighborhood. Are there any district representatives? I'm sorry. I'm, I just really want to get through tonight's agenda. Will the applicant please come forward? Uh, as I mentioned before, you'll have fifteen minutes for your presentation. Go ahead.
Jeff Jarvis, I live in, uh, Payson, three thirty West Utah Avenue. I own this company, Tough Coat. We've been in business since nineteen ninety-five. So yes, we did purchase this property. It was nice or it was ugly, horrible, and we've done a lot of work and we're trying to make it something really nice. The problem is the lot is not square. It's small. It's hard to fit everything in there and we've twisted and turned and tried to, you know, we had it at one point and then the entrances wouldn't work because they were too close to the corner and so forth. So now we've had to move it again, which took away all the parking. So we're down, so we did that parking study hoping that we, we don't need the parking. It was just trying to comply with the, you know, city ordinance in the first place. But we have three employees. We don't have any customers that come to our office. Uh, we have customers that come and drop off their work and they'll pull inside of the building, unload it. When they come back to get it, they'll pull in the other bay on the other side and pick it up. So, in fact, my office isn't even open. I do all my work from home, so it's not much going on as far as traffic, just in and out. And my, I have a comment also. You know, I have looked for property, I've been looking for a year because they raised my rent by eight grand a month and man, who cares? If, if they want to buy a building that don't have enough parking, they can't buy it. I've looked at buildings that don't have enough power. I've looked at buildings that don't have anything that I need. I move on and that's the way this will be. Either they'll have a business that will work in there or they won't. That'll be, you know, pretty straightforward, I think.
I, do you have anything else you wanted to add?
No.
Uh, I did a quick search, just, uh, it looks like it is your previous address or your current address is in Springville?
Springville.
Eighteen seventy-nine North thirteen hundred West?
Yeah, you'll see two trucks parked there every day.
Okay. Uh, and then we're just jumping ahead to questions room. I'm, unless you haven't noticed. What, what side is the, the entrance? Not the entrance of the building, but you said there's a, a bay that cars will pull in and, and drop their materials on?
Two bays, one on each side of the building.
Which, uh, if you could point to me where that, um, is it on Valley Vista? I had a hard time seeing it. Okay.
Yeah, well, you can see on the right side, the, the office pokes out in the middle. The far bay on the right and on the left, they drop off in the right bay and on the left bay they go in and pick up. Those will be thirty-foot wide bays and so there'll be walls and then all the work will be done in the middle. So they'll go in the right side, drop off the work, then we'll process it through the middle of the shop. When it's finished, we'll put it in the left bay for them to pick up. All of our operations that we've had, all this work's been kept outside. It gets dirty or, you know, or else you gotta go dig it out of the snow or whatever. So building this new building, I tried to set it up so it would run perfectly. So, uh, I've addressed all those issues that way.
Go ahead.
So are they backing in from the street in those driveways to get into those bays?
The whole idea is to drive through, drive through and go out the back. The drive-through in the right one to go unload and then you go out the back, drive through the left one, unload and go out that back entrance.
So is the width of, of this, just, I'm looking at it on the north side. It looks very narrow.
On the north?
Are they, I'm assuming they're going around the building to come out on the other side?
Well, you go through the building. That driveway won't be used much, only to go empty the trash dumps.
Oh, so you're saying they're driving into the bay, going, driving through the building and driving out? So these big trucks don't need to go around this little narrow road?
Holy enclosed operation.
Okay, that's why I was concerned. I was like, how are they going to make those turns with cars parked on the side? Okay, beautiful.
We've had a hard time getting the distance in the back to pull out.
Gotcha.
There's been a lot of, I mean, it's almost like that's the only place it could fit, it's right there.
Okay, I understand that better. I have one more question for you. Um, you ta-, they talked about dust collection bins. Is there some, at what point in the process are the dust collection fans, whatever, um, regulated? Who regulates those? Make sure they're working so there's not particulate matter going in to the air?
First of all, it's all enclosed, so there's no dust collectors outside. It's all inside. So yeah, we'll empty them, you know, according to what.
It's just your internal backtrack. Okay.
Yeah, the dust just goes into a big barrel and when it gets close to full, we empty it. That's it.
Okay.
Do you do sandblasting at this operation?
Yep.
And is that the same, same story with your dust collection?
Oh yeah, that's where the main dust collection will be. The powder rooms, they have their own little dust collection. Each one of them just sucks the powder into filters and then you clean those out once a week. Their air returns back into the shop, so there's no air going outside at all.
And this is maybe partly just curiosity. So I've been a part of a steel company for a number of years and we use a tremendous amount of yard space. I'm, I'm a little surprised at the size of this. So how does your operation differ in not having that, the yard space to be able to?
Because we moved it inside.
So all of your storage and your processing is inside?
A lot of outside storage is nice, but they don't want to see that in here for one thing, and I don't like it either. It's junky, so everything will be inside.
I, I want to, um, let, let you know, if you pull up a Google Map aerial on that, their current Springville address, it, it tells a different tale.
Yeah, it's junky.
With, with them moving it inside, it's, it's quite a big contrast.
Well, you know, this is the first building I, I've been able to design from scratch. I've always moved into buildings that I've had to make them work somehow. And so, you know, this will operate really efficiently. And, uh, yeah, we don't want to deal with product outside anyway with the weather and everything, so.
Anyone else? Any other commissioners have questions? Okay, okay. Standby, just, just take a seat nearby in case we need to recall you. Yeah, district, any district representatives present? No? Okay, uh, we'll now open this up for public comment. Yeah, we'll open to hearing public comments. If there are any neighborhood district chairs present, they'll have three minutes to comment. The general public will have two minutes to comment. Um, our, our staff member will put a timer up. Uh, when your time is up, you'll hear a ding and the microphone will be muted. Uh, when your time is up, you'll hear a ding and the microphone will be muted. Each person may take, they make one comment. If we have additional questions, we'll, we'll invite you to come forward at that time. Uh, go ahead. If, if there's anyone from the public, please come up, line up. Make your comments heard. Okay, seeing no public comment. We will now close public comment. Uh, commissioners? Discuss?
Um, I, I, I spend some time around this area and I mean, it's, there's not a lot, a lot happening. So I think it's great to have, uh, someone wanting to invest in this area and like, uh, Mr. Murray was saying, add value. And, uh, I have very, almost zero concerns about the parking. I mean, even if there was an issue every once in a while, there's street parking for days.
Yeah, I mean, I looked at the old area photos and I don't even know where they parked on there, but it looks like it wasn't parking intensive at their Springville location. Um, and yeah, I think any, if this were to be sold or transferred, then you know, the new owner and applying for a business license would, would have the constraints of it. Um, that go in knowing, or they should if they do their due diligence. Anyone else?
I think it's an exciting opportunity to see a business go into an otherwise unwanted place and to see that it's going to be a better situation for them, which will be good for everybody, I think.
Let's have a motion. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that we approve the requested project plan application. Uh, Jake Black requests project plan approval for a new industrial warehouse in the PIC zone located at two twenty-seven twenty-five South Mountain Vista Parkway, Spring Creek neighborhood. That the required parking is nine spaces and that all remaining CRC comments be addressed prior to a building permit being issued.
That's what I just wanted to make sure.
Right. I would have caught that too with the following two conditions. All right. Uh, discussion on the motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Nudson with a second. Uh, let's vote on it. Uh, start. We'll call it Commissioner Nudson.
Aye.
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 I vote aye.
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 Okay, uh, passes unanimously. Nine to zero. Thank you very much. Uh, thanks for your participation. Look forward to having you in Provo. Item number three, James Chapman requests project plan approval for a one hundred ninety-five unit townhome development in the MDR zone located at fifty-five forty-four North River Run Drive, River Bottom, River Bottoms neighborhood. Uh, staff member Aaron Ardmore is presenting.
Okay, thank you, Plan Commission. Um, so actually the first thing before I jump into the proposed, proposed project is, um, as you know, we usually send you public comments that come in through email ahead of the hearing. We had one that came in about ninety minutes before the hearing, um, so we didn't have time to send it to you. So if you allow me, I'll just read it for the record.
Yes, please.
Uh, okay, so this comes from Sharon Memmott. Uh, she, she's a Provo resident. Uh, I apologize for late email. Uh, okay, I know we are late in the process here and I understand correctly. This will not need to go to city council next for approval. I have been watching some of the meetings on this project and don't feel like the neighborhood and city concerns about allowing access to the Provo River have really been met by the rendering on that I see. I know my neighbors who would like to jog or bike near the river would not consider the road through the project as allowing that access. In fact, one would have to be in someone's backyard to actually be considered to be accessing the river. There are a few places left in Provo. These new residents are where we have the opportunity to preserve that access. I don't propose taking it away completely from the applicant and these new residents, but could some part of it be actually accessed? Still, please. Along those lines, I am glad to see from the renderings that the end of fifty-six hundred North is left slightly open, possibly for future improvement of access to University Avenue and the current Parkway Trail via an improved bridge over fifty-six hundred North. I'm actually a little surprised that for such a large project that emergency services wouldn't require the easy second access that fifty-six hundred North would allow. Uh, could that be written into the proposed contract with the city? Uh, so it stays once the development actually begins. Uh, thanks for your consideration. Um, so I think I'll be able to address those concerns as I move forward in this presentation. Um, so, uh, to make you familiar or re-familiarize you, uh, the Plan Commission with this project. Uh, this came to you before as a concept plan and a zone change, uh, and a general plan change. So you've seen this a, a few times. Uh, now we're back here for the project plan. Uh, the project plan would have to meet both the medium density residential zone that's on the property now and the development agreement that's tied to the land, uh, that came with the rezon. Uh, so what is proposed is a hundred ninety-five townhomes. And, uh, the development agreement uh, held it as a cap of a one ninety-eight. So, so they've met that. There is one correction. You could see up on the screen fifteen point two four acres. Um, so that was, uh, a correction from the staff report that you received. I believe I had fourteen point four five. I had left out that little triangle um, on the east side there where you could see the, the pool and clubhouse area. Um, that's a, that was a separate parcel and I, I mistakenly left that out of my calculation. So that's an update from the staff report. I might as well add that we have two other updates from the staff report. Um, the, the applicant kind of let me know I had some old information or incorrect wording. And, and he was correct in, in showing me that. So on page two, the second paragraph of overview, of the overview talks about the plan showing a new public street. It's actually a private street, uh, with public access. And I think that's an important, uh, difference. And then in the parking, I had the old parking numbers. Uh, so findings of facts six and seven. The required parking for the project is actually five hundred twenty-six stalls based on the unit count and unit types. And they're providing five hundred thirty-eight stalls. So, um, hopefully that clears up anything that you see different in this presentation. Um, so here's a, here's a zoom in of the, the proposed project. Um, again, Steph has found this to meet code, um, but I want to just highlight some things specifically based on the, the public comments that we got and, and some of the history here. Uh, the, the access to the river, you can see along the north side or along the east side, um, the top of the, the map here, that gray trail, uh, that gray asphalt trail. Uh, that to me, uh, should satisfy the concern of, of the email that I just read. Um, the, the applicant has also wisely, uh, left open space in case that fifty-six hundred North across the pedestrian bridge ever does become a public street with a right of way. Uh, he didn't put any buildings there to, to make that an option in the future if it, if it becomes feasible. Um, so I think, I think those things have been thought of. Um, the emergency services are, are happy with the two points of egress on the north and the south of the project. It goes down through the riverwoods on the south and then up, uh, into Orem, Andrew North, uh, on the north side. See, yeah. So there's a, a breakdown, uh, if you're interested in, in the unit types, there's their bedroom counts, parking counts and so forth. We can hit that if any of you have a question. And of course, the, the elevations here. So these went through design review committee. Um, there's a couple of color schemes for, for both these, uh, designs uh, that they've offered. And then you have the clubhouse there on the, the bottom left of the screen. Uh, the di-, design review committee approved those that have any, uh, required changes or anything like that. Um, so Steph is at this point where we have the project plan in front of us. We, we find that it meets code, it meets the development agreement. Uh, there are a couple of conditions that I would ask for, uh, in, in the granting approval to this is one that there are a couple of remaining, uh, staff CRC comments uh, to, to be worked out, uh, with Public Works. Um, but nothing that should, should hold the approval. There are minor things that can be worked out. And that, uh, the final plat is recorded, uh, on this property uh, to, to create the one lot where it's, where it's two different lots currently. Uh, and we'd ask for that to happen before building permits are obtained. Uh, but that's all I have on this one.
I'll, I have a question. Uh, with, with that future access on the bridge across, uh, it looks like it would, it would cut into the tennis court or whatever courts they have.
So right, so.
So how do, how do you feel about that happening?
Obviously that, that would have to go and, and they could probably make that up somewhere else on the side, or that's a, an adjustment that we'd have to go through. Uh, if the city needed that street network, if we thought that was more important than that percentage of open space, that's discussion for the future. But, but, uh, the, I think the main point was that they didn't put any buildings in the way. Uh, so nobody's losing their house.
Go, go ahead. Anyone else have questions for him?
I might have missed this, but what were the qualifications for that becoming a road? That's just there in case, or is there a certain?
Someday, right? So, so someday UDOT will likely put a light on fifty-six hundred North in University Avenue.
And you'd want it to go all the way through.
That would make sense to, to carry that through.
I'm having a hard time seeing on the map where this is in relation to what's already there. And I'm just wondering how far down do they have to go before they reach University Avenue access or, um, or forty-eight hundred North? Like?
So yeah, so fifty-two hundred, uh, is a lighted intersection just south of.
In between those office buildings?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's not shown here. That's just below on the right hand corner?
Exactly.
Okay. So they're going to have to drive all the way through the office park to get out to forty-eight hundred or just down to those office buildings to get out on fifty-two?
Yeah, to fifty-two hundred.
And fifty-two hundred is the one that goes across and then goes down to forty-eight hundred as well, right? It connects, there's an L?
Yes, yep.
Like in front of the medical building?
Yeah, it keeps going west and then south down to forty-hundred.
How easy is the access from the Orem side? Does it go straight out to?
To, to eight hundred North?
Yeah.
Um, yes, uh, most likely would be a right out only, um, because.
Because it's so close to the interchange there?
Yep.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask, so attachment three elevations, those have been approved? Is that correct? That's the color scheme and everything that's approved?
Yeah, the design review committee approved those.
What's page twenty-one?
Page twenty-one?
Page twenty-one, we have white and is that the original? So that's, this is, that's not the approved or anything that's being discussed, correct?
I'm sorry, I don't have a page twenty-one on my, oh, I see what you're saying. On the staff report. Yes, those are.
That's old.
Those are past renderings that came with the concept plan.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I have two questions. One is, um, you said this was just, the road was just in case. I'm wondering what, what level of road that would be, like collector or whatever? There's no inkling of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nothing on that tonight.
The other question I had was what specifically were the concerns from the neighborhood meeting about? Could you elaborate if you know about, um, rooftops versus green space and possible occupancies? What were those concerns?
Sure. Um, so there was a couple of voices in the neighborhood meeting I attended, um, uh, that district meeting, uh, where uh, it looked to them, to a couple of those voices that there's more, uh, asphalt and rooftop than green space. However, they're, they're meeting and exceeding the, the requirement for the zone.
When I looked at the, this earlier today at the map, it didn't seem like there were neighbors very close. Were these neighbors on, like, there's so much commercial surroundings and then like empty areas? Did, is there any indication of like where those people were from? Like, were they on the other side?
Um, so District one is, is pretty much all of the, all of North Provo. Um, so it's all those different neighborhoods, Edgemont, River Bottoms, Sherwood Hills. They're, so they're, they're pretty spread out.
Okay, so we don't know exactly where these people were coming from as far as their, where they live. If it's affected?
Right.
Um, uh, is there anything in this, uh, is there anything indicates if these will be for rent or for sale?
They will all be for rent. So the, uh, the property owner will keep all these and just, they'll just be for rent townhomes.
Okay, thank you.
One more question I had. Maybe this, maybe this isn't part of the process at all, but, um, the, the potential road kind of cuts off the clubhouse and a bunch of, like, I mean, just a little portion of this. Um, I don't know, that seems really weird to me that there would be like this little piece that is separate, potentially.
So this is the, this is the road that has the public access through it?
So it's like right in front of the clubhouse?
Right.
Right. Yeah, I just think that's like a little bit weird that this little piece could potentially be, you know, made into a little island from hi- higher speed traffic coming off the highway. I just think that's, I don't know. Maybe there's nothing, no apparatus to look at that, but I think that that's something that's concerning. That you would cut this little community kind of in pieces.
I think she's talking about if fifty-six hundred comes through.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's.
Potential street.
Yeah, I mean, that's, uh, that's unknown. We're not prepared to discuss tonight, so.
My question is related to that. Um, I mean, yeah, they've left the space, et cetera, but is that just going to be a huge fight in the future?
I don't know. I, I obviously can't tell you.
We don't have experience in the city to say, yes, it's terrible or.
No.
No.
No, no, we're just reviewing the project plans.
The, the fact that there's no building is going to make it easier.
Perhaps, but if it's cutting off a corner in the clubhouse and I can still see it in a, you know, everybody's like, you're cutting off my clubhouse. I don't want to do that.
I mean, the people who'd be most upset theoretically would be the, the residents, right? They move in there. They're renting, granted, they're not owning it, but they're going to be concerned that, hey, I just lost my courts. I'm wondering if the, if there's something in the development agreement could be modified to, to indicate that, that there's, uh, you know, just a, a, a notice that it's, everyone's aware that that's subject to future development by UDOT. Um, or, or, or that we require that they disclose that to their renters.
So it wouldn't be UDOT, it'd be a city.
Or, or city that, that, but the, the, that the owner, the Cannon River Hold Co. has to disclose to their renters that, hey, this might
So we've actually, so we've, we've already recorded the development agreement with the rezon. The project plan just needs to meet the, the statutes of the MDR zone.
Okay, so it's a little bit out of the sight of the scope of what we're discussing.
Exactly, thank you.
Dang it. Do the right thing.
Um, I think this is one of those things that the market will, like we were talking about in our work meeting, that the market's going to dictate this. Somebody's not going to want to live there if it's an island and they'll have to figure out what to do with it at that point.
Or, or they might want it more because it has closer access to University Avenue. I don't know.
So that's not, I don't know, that doesn't bug me as much. More, how do we feel about this many units? How do we feel about the, the percent, I mean, they've met the, they met the percentages. They're not asking for exceptions. So I don't think we have any grounds to say we don't like this. If they are meeting the development agreement, they're meeting the CC, the review committee CRC. They, you said the percentage of amenities that they're providing is, is it just barely at ten percent? Or I want to say it was a little bit more?
Yeah, it's a little bit more. Yes, um, required was thirty-four thousand four hundred and three. They're providing forty-three thousand one hundred seventy-seven.
Is this the same, um, project that we reviewed that asked for the rezoning? Is, or is this something different?
Yeah, yeah. So they were here within the last year, asked for the rezon.
Okay.
Yep.
So maybe we just need to hear from the developer now and get some more information.
Yeah, we were, we did, uh, back in twenty twenty-two, we did approve the concept plan.
Correct.
The rezon, then the general plan amendment for this.
That's correct.
So, yeah. Uh, i- unless anyone has any more questions for staff member Ardmore, we'll, we'll go ahead with the applicant. Thanks. Mr. Chapman? Just to note, a fifteen minutes for your presentation. Time out.
I won't take nearly that much. Uh, Jason White, Fifty East Capital, um, Jamie's our development partner. I just wanted to assuage some of your concerns. I know it sounds like, you know, the horse out of the barn a little bit and you feel like you wish you would have done other things, but I think just to clarify a couple of things. One, One, the the future road was an easement that Provo City had asked for that we are, you know, happy to grant because at some point if there's a traffic problem, it would impact us as well. And you know, this would be coming off of fifty six hundred. And so, um, you know, this shouldn't be high speed traffic because it's not a big road. Um, we hope, right? If it's high speed traffic, we can put some traffic measures in like, you know, speed bumps or something like that to like make it not be a thoroughfare, but um we office two buildings down. So we are also, you know, equally concerned with people ripping through there. And I think it's the same issue we would run into at the townhomes is we want this to be a quiet kind of family oriented community and the anything that is to the detriment of that would be of concern to us, right? As well as being, you know, officeing two buildings down. So that's number one. Number two, you know, given it's a it's an easement, we, you know, we for a period of time, you know, as long as we don't have any any buildings there, it's much easier. We can put a pickleball court or something and make it a an amenity. And then if at such time it's deemed that we need some some more traffic access and this road gets built, then, you know, the pickleball court goes away. But, you know, with renters, they see what they rent. And somebody that moves in after the pickleball court's gone isn't gonna remember there was a pickleball court there when, you know, before they lived there. So and same thing goes with the road. Anybody that lives there, it's gonna be probably a you know, at least a, you know, twelve to twenty four month process to get the road going. And so anybody that lives there that feels like the road might be either negative or positively impacting them, they're gonna know that well in advance to where they could make a decision where they live based on that future date, which, you know, may never come or it may come sooner rather than later. So anyway, I just want to answer any of your questions that you may have had. And if there's technical questions, I can turn it over to Jamie with our development team.
Okay, go ahead. Uh, thank you. Uh, any questions for our applicant? Okay, I'm not seeing any.
Oh, man, already. All right.
I go ahead and have us, must Jeff, did you have any? Okay. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, did anyone wanna speak to his his expert, uh, any technical questions? He mentioned the other person here. Oh, okay. Yeah, this is District one. Is there a District one representative present? Okay, uh, with that, we'll go ahead and open this up, open the hearing to public comment. Once again, if you'll have two minutes to comment. And please line up, go ahead and come forward. If anyone else wants to come forward, please come up. If I don't see you sitting down lined up, we're we're gonna move on and close public comment. Good to see your name and residence.
Ronald Woolley, twenty eight ninety Rolling Mills Drive, Provo. I also have a commercial building that is adjacent to this property on the south side. Um, at the city council meeting where the zoning change was changed from commercial to the current zone, the developer promised the city council that there would be a Provo River Trail running along the west side of the property. I see that on the plan. In the gray box at the top, that's actually an Orem, so it's a separate approval for that property. What I would like to know is, is the developer um putting on all of his plans such that it happens? A the promise that the Provost River Trail will go from south of this property all the way to eight hundred north to connect up with the Jordan River Park Parkway and with the trail to Bridalvale. And uh I since I can't see the gray part, I don't know what their intentions are. So I was wondering if if the promise holds that they made to the city council that they would do that. Uh, the other question I have is I, uh, back then they were talking about rental properties and these are townholds. Has this changed? Are these now homes to be sold? To be um owners, owner re- residents or are they rentals? Thank you.
Thank you, miss.
Thank you, Mr. Woolley. If if I can invite the applicant back up just to address those two comments. Um, one regarding the the extension of the River Trail towards eight north, eighth north. And then um just clarify the the rental ownership thing. I think you're re- I think I already heard you say they're all gonna be rentals.
Yeah, these are all rentals. They've been rentals the whole time. Um, and to Ron's question, you know, the River Trail is intended to go from where it currently exists in the business park all the way through. I'm working with Provo and Orem jointly to have the River Trail continue on all the way up to eighth north. Um, it it doesn't connect past eighth north because there's no, there's no kind of egress across the river, but it it will end up being kind of like a roundabout and then come back down. And if you want to connect to the Provo River Trail, uh, then it goes across. Um, there's a, there's a bridge up on the north end that will connect through. And then there's the footbridge, which you see, which may be a future road that you can also ride across and connect into the Provo River Trail and continue up north through the canyon. So it connects all the river trails.
Thank you. And and just to acknowledge, I I see a head nod by Mr. Woolley feeling that I'm I'm taking that to mean your concerns were addressed. Is that? Yes, he says yes. Appreciate it. Any other public comment?
I'm Kurt Beecher with Central Utah Water. Um, if you went back to the other map where the aerial was, our property is up on the left hand corner there where the old exact where building was. So that's where our offices are. We have a couple of large facilities that go through this property and we are working with them and they've been good to work with. And so I just wanted to let you know that we don't have any issues with that. There's the uh um Alpine Aqueduct two B uh pipeline that goes through there. And then there's also a um the power line that comes from our Homestead Power Plant that goes through this property. Both of those have to be some work has to be done with both of those. Some of it's just easements and some of it's actually moving power lines, so. But we're working with them and don't have any issues. Just wanted to let you know.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing that, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment, um, discuss among commissioners. Anyone, if if I don't see any comment, I'm I'm gonna go ahead and make your statement, but if if anyone else wants to move ahead with the motion, I'm also, they entertain that. Go ahead.
I like the look of the elevations. I think it will look nice. I like that there's variety in them. I um feel like they've met the requirements of the zone and um I know it feels like we should talk longer because there's more units, but I feel like we talked a lot about it when the zone change was was considered and um, there's been a lot of oversight and there will continue to be a lot of oversight as the permit process continues. So I don't have a problem with this. I think it will it'll, I I think they'll do a nice job and hopefully it will be a nice addition to the city, so. I don't feel like we have any reason to deny it because we're really in the position of saying the code says this, they've met their requirements in the code. So unless we see any red flags to discuss, I don't see any myself.
Yeah, I'll just second, we did spend a fair amount of time on this when it first came up on those those first three items. But but if if any commissioners wanna bring up some other things, I'm happy to entertain them. Commissioner Whitlock?
Uh, yeah, this looks like a fantastic development. Um, I do remember when we talked about this, it was like that river trail access was a key requirement and it sounded like that was also recapitulated with the city council. That would be my only concern is the current plan doesn't shows it kind of ending and then there's just Orem. And so I would feel a lot better if I saw that gray line go through so that connection happens. But that feels like in the spirit of the original agreement we made, but other than that, I'm thinking it's gonna be a great development.
Well, uh, let's hear a motion from someone.
Commissioner.
So I'll make a motion, uh, move the planning commission to approve the proposed project plan. This is item three, uh, project plan approval for a hundred ninety five unit townhome development in the MDR zone located at fifty five forty four North River Run Drive, River Bottoms neighborhood. Uh, with the following conditions that the remaining CRC comments be addressed and that a final plat is recorded uh prior to permits.
Any further discussion on the motion? Or amendments? No? Okay, is there a second for the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, let's uh vote on that. Start with Commissioner Niedson.
Hi.
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 I vote I.
Hi.
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 All right, passes unanimously, uh. Nine zero. Uh, thank you. Mr. Chapman, uh, I'm gonna be reading the next item. Numbers for read them all three at the same time? Just take them one at a time or this one?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I see what you mean. Okay, item number four. David Peterson requests an ordinance text amendment to the interim transit oriented development zone building height section uh fourteen point two three point zero nine zero of the Provo City Code to remove the building step back requirement at the fifth floor, citywide application. Uh, staff member Dustin Wright presenting.
Well, thank you, thank you. So this item, the applicant's requesting this text amendment here uh to facilitate a more efficient development on their property that's in the I T O D zone. So as you can see here, this text amendment is uh striking out a a sentence in the height, in the building height section of the I T O D zone. Um, the amendment essentially is looking at removing the the step back requirement. So it's a fifteen foot step back when you get to the fifth floor um of the development that the building would at that point uh shift back fifteen feet from where the the first five levels of the building are. This is something similar to what we removed from our downtown zone about a decade ago, um where we've we've removed the step back requirement except for along Center Street. That zone, we haven't seen any issues with that. Uh, the reason that was kept in the in Center Street was just because of the historic district that's in our downtown. But in I T O D zone, we don't have an issue uh removing the step back requirement. Uh, we feel like it will help remove remove a hurdle that exists for uh development and help maximize the the building potential in these areas that we've designated as a city for for these higher density developments is what's being proposed tonight. So in our our city right of ways in this area, uh, we have like eighty plus feet of of space. And so when we look at the building heights permitted in the zone, I T O D zone has a hundred foot building height. So we don't see an issue here with with removing that step back requirement. For this area here in purple, that's our I T O D zone where this uh text amendment would affect this area here in the city. So staffs recommending that you forward a positive recommendation onto the city council for this ordinance text amendment. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Go ahead, uh, commission members, any questions for Mr. Wright?
I just have one, um. In the staff report, it talks about how there haven't been issues with daylighting. That was one of the reasons for it. The question I had was in to the current I T O D zone? If those were ever moved into that zone, I mean, I I would imagine that doesn't go much further, but would there be any concern with width of streets and sunlight or daylight sunlight down to the feet?
Um, I think the majority of our streets in in Provo and in in Utah are are generally pretty wide. And I don't anticipate that we'd have an issue uh with those those type issues. That's more for you're looking at skyscrapers and cities that commonly have narrow streets. That's where you start to look for those. Or like I mentioned earlier, in a historic district where you're trying to to maintain the aesthetic of certain building heights.
Right.
And that's where that uh makes sense, but in this area or in adjacent areas, I don't anticipate there being issues like that.
Great, thanks.
I had a question about page two and the last paragraph of the background section. It says our downtown and I Todd area have very wide streets and so we don't have an issue with daylight. Step back requirements have been beneficial along Center Street in the downtown historic district to ensure compatibility with the historic structures. So maybe I'm misunderstanding it, but it sounds like the step the step back requirements have been beneficial. So why would we wanna remove them? Is that just because they've been beneficial in making the facade, the historical facade stand out?
Correct. So in the in the downtown zone, we did remove it except for certain areas on Center Street, which is the historic district. And like I said, in in that district, uh, the majority of those structures are two or three stories high. And so in that zone, um I believe the step back requirement is above the third story. And that just steps it back to help new development, help fit in.
The scale.
The scale of the historic development. So that's where having a step back is a is a good thing to have.
So in the I Todd zone, um, are there other buildings that have been subject to these standards or is this really the first ask? I'm just wondering if there's others that are gonna come screaming saying, whoa, we we lost footprint because we had to step back or we lost square footage because we had to step back. Are we creating a I know legally that's just tough luck for them, but how, what what are the number of times this has actually been applied? Or is this us trying to realize that the reason it hasn't been applied is because nobody's developing because it's too hard?
Yeah, did we, I, because I I wanna say, I I don't know if it's the same project or one we had in the last year or two or somebody else. Uh, some other applicant complained about the step back requirement. And maybe I I don't know if it's the same one or different.
So I'm just wondering if it's only been beneficial because of historic preservation and the scale of the facade on that street front? Or um if there's anyone else that has been subject to this?
Um, I can't think of one in in the I T O D zone, um, where that's been an issue on the same block as the development we're gonna look at next in the next item. Um, that was in the downtown zone, so that step back didn't apply. And that might have been a a thing that helps them want to do that in that.
The development on on six hundred south and one hundred west is a pro zone. Is that so that they didn't have the same requirements? Because they don't have a set a step back on their upper floors, right?
Yeah, that pro zone doesn't have that uh same requirement as the I T O D.
So that seems like an argument in favor of getting rid of it as well if somebody has to create a special zone to circumvent the requirements.
Yeah, it it really, um, the the pros and cons to it. In this case, there's not really a lot of pros. Like I said, if we had narrow streets and the I T O Z's I T O D zone allowed much taller building heights, then I think we would be looking at wanting something like that potentially. Uh, but with our street widths and the the building height being a hundred feet maximum in that zone, we don't see a benefit to it. It just does create more development hurdles that limit the amount of density and things that we fit in the city and the areas that we've identified where we want that density.
Like I know.
Thank you.
I I know that makes sense for like University Avenue, Freedom Boulevard. Do we feel the same way about the other smaller streets like a hundred west or five hundred south, you know?
They're pretty wide down there. There there's a lot of room. It maybe it doesn't feel like it because there's also a lot of on-street parking at Angles.
There's a lot of.
And there's not a whole lot of defined sidewalk and curb and gutter. But I think once you get the improvements made with new development, there'll be plenty of space to make a U-turn with a covered wagon like the streets were designed.
I just to know, like, uh, I mean, there there aren't buildings more than a hundred feet in downtown Provo, right? Like.
In the downtown zones, like.
Like the Wells Fargo and the.
Those.
Lions Bank.
Could be. I know a recent one in the downtown zone would be Highland or Highline Square. It's right by the rec center on Freedom and five hundred north. Uh, I think that one's very similar to the one we're looking at tonight as.
How tall is the one in that pro zone? The Mill Mill Race?
Mill Race. Um, I think that zone allows for.
Six hundred, I see someone.
No, sixty one, six stories.
Sorry.
We're playing charades.
Sorry. Um, so that's uh the center building you see there in the pro zone, that's a six story building.
Which is how many feet?
Less than a hundred.
So so it sounds like when we're capped at a hundred feet, at least we don't really need this step back.
Yeah, I don't believe that it serves a good purpose in this zone and that's why I would recommend that it goes away. Yeah, I, I don't believe that it serves a good purpose in this zone, and that's why I would recommend that it goes away. I think to help maybe answer part of your question, uh, around the peripheral of the zone, we have a transitional standards where the setbacks uh, increase, so when, even in the downtown zone, when you're, when the zone like this is adjacent to a residential zone, then there's our transitional standards in a different chapter that come into play to help mitigate any concerns in those areas.
So just out of curiosity, is, from a planner point of view, there kind of a number of hours sunlight you'd like to see a street get? That kind of, is there any sort of standard like that? When is it too dark, etc.?
Um, well, I don't, I don't know if I have a specific number. Um, like I said, here in Utah, with our white streets, it's really, um, not a, not an issue. Uh, we have our street tree, um, canopy that, that has worked well in our downtown zone because our white streets and sorry, I don't know that, I don't know that I have a specific number for you on hours of daylight that I know of the last decade.
I'm just curious, because I just ran the math and theoretically with two hundred foot buildings on each side, you'd get, on an eighty foot road, you'd get three hours of sunlight in a day, and so on a north-south street, right, where the sun's just crossing it. Um, so I'm just curious, is that enough? Is that not enough? Where, what do we think about that?
Did you say two hundred feet?
So it's an eighty foot fi- wide road with a hundred foot buildings on each side, kind of worst-case scenario. Um, you get three hours of sunlight.
And we have trees that are on, they're constantly in the shade. You know, the, the north face of those buildings and those. I've not seen that issue come up.
I wanted to say, there's, um, there's also something to be said for, um, I guess on the opposite end of that with the sunlight, um, sort of the ideal enclosure with, um, if we're making these zones like walk, walkable friendly, the most safe feeling is like a one-to-one street to building ratio. Um, but that also allows for some cooling in the summer. So you might not get the, all the sunlight, but it also keeps the streets cooler and a lot more comfortable for people to exist in during the day and have it be that walkable neighborhood, which I think is sort of what this density is meant to promote. So, I think I don't wanna bring up Europe as this, people have a problem with it, but, um, in Paris, you know, the city's has, a lot of their buildings are about five or six stories, really similar proportions to this, but they have, uh, much uh, narrow streets. So, for what it's worth.
Any other questions for staff member Wright? Okay, thank you, Mr. Wright. Okay, uh, go ahead and open this up for public comment. Public hearing portion. Uh, please come forward, state your name, you'll be limited to two minutes. If you're not lined up to show you're gonna speak, well... The applicant? I thought it was the city. Oh, boy. I got, I'm... Oh, Mr. Peterson.
You know, I, I, um, David Peterson, I don't really have any additional comments, I'm just happy to answer any questions you have. We're grateful that the staff is in favor of this and we think it's a, a good addition to the code. Thank you.
Alright, yeah, I don't... Okay, another applicant, if you have any questions for him, we can recall him. Okay, uh, public comment? I see none. Go ahead and close public comment. Yeah, commissioners to discuss amongst ourselves. I'm, I'm kind of in agreement, I think that I in the summer, I walk on the sides of the street that have the shade from the buildings. I gravitate towards those. Anyone else? Commissioner Jensen?
Um, I feel like this isn't allowed, uh, this isn't required in the adjacent downtown zone. The DT one at least, and this is what we wanted, we wanted our ITOD zone to be a high-density, um, maximal usage in the space. I feel like it meets what it was intended to be. So maybe that's not our goal for every spot in Provo's commercial areas, but this is the spot we decided was going to be that way. So for that reason, I don't have a problem with, um, removing the requirement. I like on page three of the staff report, um, it's in response to whether this is the, it meets the public purpose for the amendment or what the public purpose is, and it says to encourage new development in the ITOD that can be more affordable by more efficient use on limited land areas in the zone. So the more we can get in that space, the better we're making, better use we're making of our resources and packing it closest to where the amenities are that we built it for. That's just me.
Any other discussion, commissioners? I'm not seeing anyone, so let's, uh, all entertain a motion. Mr. Newtonson?
Yes, I would propose that we send a positive recommendation to the municipal council for item number four. David Peterson requests an ordinance text amendment to the interim transit-oriented development zone building height section fourteen point two, three point oh nine oh of the Provo City Code to remove the building's step back requirement at the fifth floor as citywide application.
Um, any discussion on motion? I, I do wanna bring up, uh, for the sake of transparency, I, I do know Mr. Peterson. In my previous employment, uh, we used him as a engineering services consultant, engineering consultant. Um, I'm no longer with that company and have no feelings or beliefs towards that. It was a different project, so I, I, I don't feel there's a conflict, but I, I do know him and recognize him. For the sake of transparency. Any second on the motion?
All second.
Right, let's have a, a real call.
Hi.
I.
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 Alright, the recommendation for approval to municipal council passes nine zero. Items items five and, can we read five and six together?
Okay.
Oh, uh, I'm really sorry, Mr. Wright. Uh, can we take a five-minute recess? Just, uh, we'll come back, uh, just five-minute break real quick, thanks.
The applicant has agreed to put in a pet amenity space within the landscaped area, um, to help with that need that we've seen, um, in these type of developments, so since that's not part of the code requirements, um, that would be part of a development agreement that would ensure that that pet amenity space is included in the, in the landscaped area, and that's something that they were willing to do. Here's the proposed architectural renderings, um, these ones here that we're looking at are updated from the ones that are in your staff report to reflect the suggested changes that the designer view committee gave. So they've made those changes and I've included them here. Um, the designer view committee, uh, gave a positive uh, approval on the, the architecture and the materials of this development. Here's the elevation drawings showing the overall height of eighty-four feet, to which complies with the height requirements in the ITOD zone. The, part of the height requirements that we looked at in the last item, uh, require that step back, so their proposed concept plan shows it as though the step back requirement has been removed, and so the approval that we recommend on this would be subject to the city council approving the item for the text amendment to, to remove the step back requirement. So this project is showing it, um, as though that was approved. Uh, along the street frontage, the, the first levels are parking along the street frontage, those uh, parking, uh, levels would be blocked uh, from fuel on the public street with, uh, facade there showing amenity space and lobby entrance and things into the building as well as the entrance down to the parking garage. Okay. And then here for item six, the rezone portion, so it's these two parcels highlighted in red. They're currently in the downtown DT one zone that they're requesting that those be rezoned to match the parcel below it in the ITOD zone. So, there's the image of the zoning map, the purple is the ITOD zone and that orange is the DT one zone. Our general plan map is, uh, designating this area as a transit-oriented development designation, which the ITOD zone that they're requesting this rezone for, uh, complies with that, so there wouldn't be any need to change the general plan map. And then here are some images, um, property in its current condition. So these would be demolished, the parcels would be combined into one, uh, to make way for the, and development that we've looked at today. Um, so staff's recommendation for the concept plan, um, it's like I mentioned, subject to the zone change and the development agreement recommends that those things be forwarded or sorry, the concept plan would be your approval with those conditions. And the staff recommendation for the rezone is also to forward a positive recommendation to the city council um, for that rezone with a development agreement that includes the pet amenities uh, that discussed in elevations, materials in the concept plan that we've looked at today. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on items five or item six.
Right, any questions for staff member Wright? Commissioner Jensen?
Um, it looks like the ingress and egress is all going out onto five hundred south, is, is that okay to only have that one access?
Yes, that, that, uh, that point right there on five hundred south would be the ingress, egress for the development, there wouldn't be another one. And it's been reviewed and, and it's fine with our.
And that meets, that meets engineering standards. I was under the impression that a certain number of of units would require more than one access point. That's totally fine. Mr. Day?
David Day of Public Works.
David Day with Public Works. Yeah, that would be sufficient for this project.
Okay. Sorry to make you walk up just for that. Thank you. I was, where's my other question? I'm concerned, I, that's for something else. Okay. The other one was the downtown street scape, streetscape standards will be required at this location. So just to be clear, that is a design review process for all of the downtown neighborhood? Or is it just the downtown zones? It's like the ITOD zone is subject to those standards as well?
Yeah. So the streetscape standards, there's a map in that document that highlights some of the ITOD zones, some of the downtown zones. This property would be included in those. So a project plan, we would make sure that all of those are applied.
Okay. Then the other one I just have, I don't know that there's much we can do because it sounds like they've met the zoning requirements, but if you look at the footprint, it's pretty much the footprint of the lot. This is a huge building with very, very little setbacks. I'm guessing that those are all within the parameters that are allowed.
Yeah, the lot coverage. There's a lot coverage in the ITOD zone there.
I just worry, I know we just, we just said we liked the idea of not having the the step back requirement up above, but I don't know that we realized what the setback was. And we learned our lesson the hard way with other developments in Provo that are right up against a sidewalk, right up against a street. So are we gonna regret? I don't know of any other 84 foot tall building in Provo, let alone right up against the street. So I just wanted to, do you want to speak to that or comfort us with a happy thought about that?
So yeah, we do have others that are you know, seven stories. We've had, I mentioned earlier, Highline or Highline Square, seven story.
How tall is that though? Is it really?
It's probably pretty comparable, I would imagine to this. I don't know the exact height on it, but I know that it was seven stories.
Okay.
But yeah, lot coverage there in the ITOD zone, there's, there's not a requirement for lot coverage. So they are allowed to cover the site. And the building height in the zone is 100 feet and they're 84 feet. So they're below the maximum height that the zone allows.
Can somebody who's familiar with it, for example, I'm just thinking of another imposing project. The one that's in the CMU zone on 900 East and 700 North. Does somebody know how high that building is and what the setbacks of that project are? So we can get an idea of scale? Any staff member?
This, this is something we've asked before and been told that that's been corrected. So this is
Right. It has been, that's for the CMU zone. So I'm just trying to visualize in my head what the what the scale of this will be to the pedestrian on the street based on a 10 foot setback.
Because the one on 9th East is less than a 10 foot setback, right?
I believe so.
The 9th East project went through when you could have zero setback, which is what it has. It's a result of that project that we increased the setbacks to a minimum of 10 and a maximum of 20.
Okay. So it won't feel as imposing because that's already been corrected. That I just wanted to make sure because it is a very, very tall building. Do you happen to know about how tall that one is? So we can get an idea of height, what that height looks like. Okay.
Just to know, that was Director Pepperoni.
Bill Pepperoni. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Go ahead, Commissioner DeSoto.
So we talked about, there's just one, one entrance onto 500 South, is that right? And that's, this is a pedestrian entrance? This is a, you could walk into it? And then this is the car?
Yeah, there's the, on the right hand side, there's the vehicle entrance and then there's pedestrian entrances.
Okay. Second question related to that, kind of the setbacks, the footprint. Because of this zone is what it is, are you anticipating more buildings of this kind of similar scale to be nearby? And that is why it kind of makes sense to only have the entrance on the front? Is that like the logic of it is what I want to know?
Yeah. So I mean, on the same block. Back here. So on this block here, on the right hand side of of this development and also to the north of it, that's where the Fairbanks Apartment Project that came in recently will fill up that space. So on this block, you have Carson Corner on the corner of Freedom and 500 South. That's a a fair 10 plus years development. In that back corner, 100 West, 500 South, that's a currently vacant parcel that wasn't acquired and put into either one of these two projects. So I'm not sure what will ultimately happen on that one. But yeah, the zoning would allow for an adjacent property to do a similar type development.
And is there, because I'm still learning, is there anything currently that would encourage sort of like walkways between these buildings? Because we have really big blocks. And again, if we're going for pedestrian friendly, sort of denser areas where people getting this outside, is there any sort of encouragement for that currently?
It would be something I think we would allow if that were a desire from a developer to do something like that. But I don't, we don't have a requirement
But it's not required to
To break up a block, yeah.
To break up a block.
Any other questions? I don't see any other questions. We'll go ahead with the applicant, Mr. Peterson, if you'd come up. 15 minutes.
I don't have any additional presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. The architect is also here. If you have any architectural questions.
I'm not seeing any.
Great. Oh, go ahead.
Um, it says there was a neighborhood meeting held on June 22nd and people asked questions about certain things. And it says those present supported the project. I'm just wondering, were there two people there? Were there 15 people there? Just to give us an idea of how many members of the public weighed in?
The attendance to that meeting, what was there, 20 people, 30 people, something like that?
Oh, wow.
Okay.
Yeah. So I got the room, that room that's right across was mostly, it was about half full.
Okay. So thank you. That just helps me to realize that people did actually weigh in and see it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Did everyone get their chance? We can recall if their questions come up. Okay. I'm not sure which district the downtown neighborhood is in, but if there's any district representatives present, I want to give them an opportunity to speak. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to the public, open hearing to public comments. Is there anyone from the public here to speak? Please come forward, state your name, residence. Time is now yours. Okay, I'm not seeing any public comments for this. We'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the meeting. And we'll discuss among the commissioners. I'll give a few opening comments. I I don't, I know we, the 9th East, 700 North building has come up a lot and I don't know if I necessarily share the same concerns with it being so close to the street. I find most unpopular opinion here, but I don't, I don't share those concerns, but like with this one being close, it's not the same, right? It's a different foot setback. I like the landscaping plan that shown. I love how they're committed to their, their law that they provided all their parking in their on their footprint and and having to have three levels of it. I really like that. I think it's a good model for, for what could be done in the ITOD zone. And we've had arguments and discussion and debate around parking reductions. And I don't know. Well, I guess it remains to be seen if we still have those concerns with parking reductions. This is one that staff has recommended. But go ahead. Any other commissioners want to speak to this? Commissioner Jensen.
We haven't talked very much about the zone request, the zone change request. But if you are, don't have a positive opinion of it, I was just going to share my thoughts about it. Originally, I was thinking, why are we rezoning it? Wouldn't it be easier to rezone one property to the DT1 instead of two properties to the ITOD? But if you look at the map, it makes really fluid sense to go the other direction because those two properties are really small. So the map to me makes more sense to do exactly what they requested. It's not like it's a a gap in zoning. It connects very well. And the general plan on the next page shows that whole block enclosed in that, that objective type development. So as to the zone change, I think that that makes logical sense and I don't have any problems with it. As to the development, the concept plan, I like that the amenities are contained within the center of the development. I think that makes for a nice community for the people who live there. It doesn't seem like little park strips out in front invite recreation, but a nice enclosed area would perhaps. I like that this development, though it's huge scale, is going to improve the surrounding neighborhood, the curb, the gutter, the sidewalk. If you look at those pictures, even though there's things there that are sort of being used already, it's not the type of place you want to walk down the street. And I feel like that will give a gradual improvement to the area. I have concern about how the occupancy, even though they say family occupancy, I don't know how you regulate that. So that worries me a little bit. The only thing I wanted also to say that was maybe negative was if Sandy, if you can go to the slide that has the renderings with the grass around it, that one, I just want to point out to the commissioners that that is not realistic because the footprint of the building is basically the footprint of the lot. So anything you see here in green is most likely somebody else's property. So right now it might be vacant and might be idealized with grass, but it will be closer to what's around it. There'll be things around it. So don't be, don't be persuaded by the green carpet that looks so lush and happy, but it's not astroturf. I'd like to point out that is definitely grass. So
To that, if I could interrupt to that point, Mr. Wright, this rendering is, it's different than the landscape plan that they submitted, correct? Yeah, it is different than the rendering. Right?
But beyond that, I was just trying to point out that the green space is not actually their property.
Right. Right. The rendering shows a lot more
Yeah.
green space there than
And I like that Mr. Wright pointed out that the, the property to the west, that Carson's Corner, is that like three stories, two stories? It's not very tall. And so that sort of breaks up the scale a little bit too, that that's a relatively new development and it's not eight stories or seven stories tall. So that kind of gives a nice setback and a natural setback there.
I agree. And I guess if, if there were to be developed something on the other side, I guess on the east side that was tall, we'd have, we'd know exactly how, how much sunlight those, those plants would get. But I think this is also a really nice addition to this area and I like the transparency of the pedestrian entrance and it's pretty inviting. I feel like imagining this being, like you said, built up with other, a variety of buildings will be really nice. It's a great start to adding that variety to a space that should be hopefully walkable and inviting.
Okay, if there's no other comment, does someone want to put forward a motion on items? We'll read them in separately. Yeah, the zone map amendment. Just again, like I don't, I agree with Commissioner Jensen. I those two parcels in the middle of the whole block, they, they make more sense to be attached annexed to the ITOD than stay as D21. But does anyone want to put forward a motion on item number five, concept plan approval?
Does anyone have problems with it? Like are there too many of one type of unit, not enough of another? Do you not like the parking layout or the landscaping that's proposed or? Are they, this is concept plan, so they can still change the configuration of two bedroom, one bedroom studio, right? Obviously the number of units or occupants can't change very much because of parking.
What?
Are they asking, they're not asking for a parking exception that's not already naturally granted, correct?
Correct. Yeah, they meet their parking requirement based off the unit type that they've shown. So if they change that, then we'd have to
Okay.
look back at that. There's a development agreement being proposed that would go with the rezone to the city council. As part of that, the concept plan is included in that development agreement. So if there's changes to it, they'd have to go back to the city council to get development agreement changed to make those changes. So unless there's, yeah, a big need to change something like that, I think it's, it's a good project that meets the parking requirements and fits within the the zone as they've shown it in the concept plan. I think the project plan will be able to move forward if those other items are approved by the city council.
Mr. Wright, I'm curious what staff thinks. I'm, this is not necessarily related to this project, but what's the stomach of development services for a higher maximum height? Something taller. I, because I've always, some, some parts of me think that, that Provo is in my mind, a clear number two city in Salt Lake and in Utah. And if you look at the growth projections in the next 30 years, the little they're huge still. I don't know how, but they're huge. And I, sometimes I feel we're short changing zoning a little bit with the capping maximum height at 100.
So before I answer the height question, let me just address Commissioner Jensen's concern about occupancy. It's very rare for us to have occupancy problems in a building like this that has central management. As much as we really want to see individual ownership and owner occupancy, those are the units where we have occupancy problems because one individual buyer buys the unit decides to maximize profits and puts as many people in as they can. But a managed building like this, an apartment building, it's very rare for us to have occupancy violations.
Thank you.
On the issue of building height, it's been coming up more and more recently. Some property that's been proposed to redevelopment, they've asked if staff will consider increasing the 100 foot limit in the DT1 zone. There's some places where we've already done that. The Mill Race was approved for more than 100 feet. In fact, I think they were approved for 200 feet. So I think the ball's rolling in that direction. We already don't have any limitations on density in these zones. Your limitation on density is the building height and your ability to park it. Those factors have this, the biggest impact on the number of units. My guess is, is that we'll end up increasing building height for the exact reasons that you've just proposed. If you think about it, once you identify property that's ripe for higher density, to do other things that then push that density back down is probably working against your best interest, right? So I'm sure you'll probably see requests in near future to increase that height.
Thank you for taking time for that. I appreciate it. Any other discussion?
This is a massive digression, but you started it. When I was in Tempe a few months ago, I slammed on, I went swimming on a Few months ago, I slam on, I went swimming on a fi- uh, rooftop pool fifteen story building. It was incredibly cool. And I was like. This is what downtown Tempe is what downtown Provo needs to become.
Call it, call it town, right?
Yeah, but they've just completely changed a lot of their downtown zoning requirements to allow these like really. Cool, modern, tall buildings and it's, it's a really awesome place.
This goes back to our discussion about ratios and, and thinking that through and, and. Hoping for variety in these developments, exactly for the reason some people want modern, some people will want something more traditional and a little smaller. And, and that should all be available, I think. To make that richness.
I agree. Agreed.
Okay, so after the question. Is there anything about this project that anybody doesn't like that we wanna talk about? I think, I, I, I think I'm getting head nods in the fact that zoning. We're okay with the zone request. So are we okay with the concept plan that goes along with the zone request? If there's anything that people don't like about it, now's the time to say this is what we wanna negotiate or this is what we wanna put as a condition or something like that.
I kinda, I, I feel like it's a, it's a really great development. I think this rezone makes sense and it's not like it's. You're going from like a really restrictive zone to a very liberal zone and there it's, um, if anything downtown is maybe a bit more liberal. So I think it. Makes a lot of sense. Yeah, it's cool development.
Uh, just to note that development agreement hasn't been signed or anything yet. Uh, so yeah, now is the time if we. Feel, if we feel there are things that should go on a development agreement, now would be the time to bring them up.
Uh, just putting this out there, um, I'm wondering. With the concerns we've talked about, about parking, that this seems like it's great. They meant their parking. I wonder if, as in other places, they will have extra and if there would be. An amenability to, to some cooperative, um, parking sharing in the case there is extra parking so that they could provide parking. Potentially access parking to other. Entities in the future if it densifies to the point of needing it. I wonder if that's something.
Yeah, uh.
Would be useful.
Applicant, could you, could you address that? Do you anticipate there being spare parking, extra parking?
I actually would say there probably won't end up being enough. Uh, I think we've seen that whenever we give a. An adjustment in parking, they end up not having enough.
I, I don't know. I, I, I think when, when we have the parking. Uh. Supervisor here before she, she brought up some.
That people just aren't using the parking, they're just parking somewhere else. Okay.
Go ahead, uh, Director Pepperoni.
Uh, I don't believe we have anything, uh, that would prohibit them from using any excess parking for some other surrounding use. Um, if they're meeting the requirement, if, if their people are parking on site and they have an. Abundance, they have more than they need. I can't think of anything in our code that would prohibit them from being able to use those spaces for other people. Okay. I'd, I'd be hesitant to put some kind of requirement on to that effect, but I'd let the market do what the market wants to do.
Yeah, I wanna make sure, Commissioner Jensen, if you have some other concerns, like by all means, bring them up, uh, so we can discuss some more.
I don't have other concerns. I just wanted to make sure that other voices were being heard.
Commissioner Willian, did you, any comments? No. Willian. Sorry. Okay, I'm not seeing any further discussion. Does anyone wanna? Bring forth a, a motion and, uh, just note the. Condition on, uh, item number five of the. Development agreement approvals.
I'll make a motion, make a motion that the planning commission approve the. Concept plan requested by David Patterson for. A new hundred twenty-nine unit apartment building in the ITOD. Uh, zone located at one fifty-six west five hundred south. Subject to zone change and development agreement approvals by the city council.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Was there, was the, was city asking for a condition of like the pet amenity too?
Part of it.
It's part of the development agreement?
So that will be part of the development agreement, which would be part of the rezone.
Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, we got Commissioner Newton and Commissioner Jensen. Yeah, I have second and third. Uh. Let's go ahead and vote, uh, item number five, uh. What does my commissioner Newton?
Hi.
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 Uh. Item number five. Uh, approval. Uh, passes. Uh, vote nine zero. Should I have written that in?
I'll make a motion for item six.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, um, move that we forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council. For the approval of the requested rezone from DT one to ITOD. Um. For the two parcels, uh, located at one fifty-six west five hundred south. I should probably read this whole thing in. David Peterson requests a zone map amendment for two parcels from DT one to the ITOD zone in order. To have all parcels in the same zone to construct a new apartment building located at one fifty-six west five hundred south in the downtown neighborhood. I'll second it.
Uh, any discussion on the motion?
That would be with the development agreement. So.
Uh. All right, uh, let's load on it. Uh, Commissioner Newton.
Hi.
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 Hi, uh, item number six, six passes unanimously nine zero. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Good luck on your project. Uh. It is eight seventeen. We're gonna move on to items number. Seven, eight and nine. Uh, but we'll do seven separately, kinda, uh, put the. Make sure the cart is not before the horse. Um, and discuss the ordinance text amendment. Uh, item number seven, development services requests approval. Of an ordinance text amendment to adopt an agro tourism overlay zone. Uh, citywide application. Uh, Mr. Ardmore's presenting, uh, just as a side note, this is a new, this is a new zone that. Hasn't previously existed in Provo. Go ahead, Mr. Ardmore.
That's right. Uh, so yeah, so, uh, a little bit of background on this. You recall. Uh, applicants came in with a proposed text, text amendment to that agricultural zone, uh, to allow certain uses. Um, as discussion kinda grew and developed with planning commission and city council. There seemed to be support for the idea of allowing different uses in these zones. Um, but maybe, uh, a different way of doing it. So the. Path forward was this overlay zone. Uh, in front of you is the, the two pages of the overlay zone. Um. There'll be a little bit different text on the screen than there is in your staff packet. Uh. Legal looked at it and changed some wording. Uh, just cleaned up the wording a little bit, but it's essentially the same, uh, regulations and ideas. Uh. Nothing really substantial changed, but, uh. The background on this was to, uh, allow. Agricultural. Zone properties, farms, ranches in Provo City. Uh. Another way of economic, uh, pursuit. Uh, where farming's getting harder, um, but at the same time Provo values agricultural land. Uh, there is a, there's a, a hope that this could. Help preserve some of the agricultural land that we have in the city. Um, so you'll see there through, through the zone code, there's. Additional permitted uses, commercial tours, educational classes, museums and event halls. Uh, that wouldn't otherwise be permitted in an ag zone. Um, these. Property owners that own property in the ag zone would still have to come and ask for a zone change. To put the overlay onto their property. They'd have to have with that a concept plan detailing how that's gonna meet. Uh, the underlying zone and, and these standards. Uh, a lot of the discussion, um, or a lot of the standards and requirements in the zone. Came from the discussion with the city council. Um, just so, so you're aware of kind of that background. Um. You did receive, uh, some public input, um. In, in opposition of some of our concern with some of this language. Um, comparing it to, to other event halls specifically that we have in the city. Um, I, and I. I, I see that there are differences, but those are there for a reason. Um. Most of those event halls in the city are downtown. Uh, they're, they're in downtown neighborhoods. Uh, they're not in an agricultural zone with animal rights. So. Because of those things that these event halls, these public spaces would be coming to. Properties with animal rights and, and everything that comes with that, uh, we thought it was important to, to, um, require certain conditions with, with those types of uses. Um. I think that's all I have on this. Uh, do you have any questions?
Go ahead, uh. Any, any commissioners, go ahead, um.
Um. So I just would like some clarity. On this, um, fourteen oh eight A one hundred event hall requirements. Uh, it says when an event is held past nine P, nine PM, they need security. Um, does that mean they need security past nine PM? Or if the event goes through. To the after hours of nine PM, they need to have security the whole time. Does that only be an hour or two hours? And is that what you meant?
It's a good question.
Cause that's my.
I guess it could be interpreted the other way, right? I think the idea was that if, if you're holding an event that's gonna run from. You know, six PM till eleven PM.
Ten or eleven.
Um, that you'd have to have one private security person for every single five guests.
Okay. So the security would have to be there even if it starts earlier in the evening. And this is, the reasoning was the emergency services and.
Right, maintaining, maintaining that atmosphere. Again, you're in agricultural zone, which you're typically in a character of, uh. Surrounding residential neighborhood, uh, and just wanna kind of protect that.
Can I also get some clarity on the one above that? The permitted uses, uh, seize operation between the following hours. So. Ten PM on Sunday to eight AM on Monday, et cetera, and then. Eleven PM on Friday to eight AM on Saturday and eleven PM on Saturday to eight AM on Sunday. Is that right?
That's right. Yeah, so those, yep, you got it.
So is it? The day is mentioned with the starting time?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, a little later on the weekend.
I have a question on the language in here. Where, let's see here, sorry. Where it talks about. Had it here. Well, I'm, I guess I'm just kinda confused how it went from a zone issue to an overlay zone with more contingencies added. Um, I, I guess I don't agree with that additional, the additional regulations and standards to address any of the concerns raised about allowing event halls on agricultural properties. I mean, we had concerns here when we met and then it went to the city council. And I listened to the meeting August first and then I also listened to it again today. And none of those concerns were brought up. They were very supportive. They. They wanted it to go to, um, an overlay zone. And they felt very comfortable with that option, but. Some of them also said, we don't want to impose extra conditions on you. That was, uh, that would increase or jeopardize the viability of your business down the road. Um, they wanted to get this part right. And they didn't want to punish you with extra conditions that you shouldn't have to hold to. So I guess when I read that.
So which ones are you speaking to? Um, cause, uh, most of those conditions came out of the proposed conditions when we were going that out.
In the council meeting or when our, when we met?
The, the text amendment, uh, remember there's a, it was gonna be a conditional use permit and there's proposed conditions with that language. That's where most of these standards.
Is that from when we met or?
Yes, that was in front of you.
So that's, that's part of my concern too, is because I felt, and this is just me being candid here. I felt, uh, you know, uncomfortable at that time when we met because, um. We were tasked with making contingencies, which were out of our scope, which. I was kind of uncomfortable with. Um, we were talking about security, how many people. But how many security people we'd need with like how many, you know, patrons or children or, you know? And then also we were kind of having to guess, if you can remember, we were trying to guess on. Um, how many acres should be allowed? Um. To be able to have a venue on the property. And I just felt like at that point, we weren't really experienced to make those kind of contingencies, which is why it was rejected three to four. So when I watched the city council meeting, that's why I was a little bit concerned or confused because. Those issues weren't even brought up, really.
So, so Steph took, took a look at this as the council director and too. And we thought of all the different concerns and, and regulations that would need to be a part of it for us to feel comfortable bringing it forward. Uh, this is what we ended up on. And I think if you take some of those things away, the minimum size of five acres. Uh, some of the event hall requirements, I don't think staff would want to bring this forward.
So ultimately, this is a decision of the city council, right? You're recommending board to them and please make whatever recommendation you're comfortable with.
Okay.
Staff is also recommending board to them. This is what we're comfortable with. Um. We're the ones who are gonna have to administer this for years into the future after this is adopted, whatever is adopted. So what we felt important, what was important is to have. Conditions of approval that are measurable, that are known upfront by being in the ordinance and that are enforceable. Because we're trying to head off problems that we can anticipate, we may have a year, two or three years from now. So this is what the staff is comfortable with, but if you wanna put forth something different, feel free to do that.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't feel comfortable looking, you know, at all the other venues and how they're not held to some of the same requirements and.
Again, that's a totally different context, I think. You're, you're in a downtown environment, uh, where these kinds of things are expected.
The difference is these have animal rights. We're trying to take public health, safety and welfare into account of having animal rights and manure piles with. A special event that will be serving food. All of these things are trying to. Take those two land uses that could be adapted of each other and make them work together.
Hmm, okay. Thank you.
Go, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I feel that the. I feel that this, you've done a great job of coming up with this overlay and I, I think it's a. Thing that will help. And, but I also feel that these, uh, requirements are needed. And I'm in favor of them. I think they should be held on this overlay, all these requirements.
Yeah, I, I'm just gonna move down the line, um, cause I think there is a fair amount of comment. Um. Commissioner Newton gave us, uh. Commissioner Willie, did? Do you have anything else?
Well, I am fine with the overlay. I just feel like the contingencies were just kind of like, we keep moving, someone mentioned moving the goalpost. I feel like we just keep adding to it. It's been going on now for about. Six months and I just feel like we're just keep adding more contingencies and I, I'm fine with the overlay and that was our concern. Um. Dr. Kendall brought that up at the last meeting when this was addressed and we've kind of talked about and discussed it, but. I don't know. I asked for help on the contingencies at that time and it was. I think it was brought up and just said, well. Just reference what they had mentioned in their request. You know, we, we, we sat and talked about it. And, and now they're coming up with more contingencies and so it just concerned me.
I, I do wanna acknowledge, I, I, I agree, you're right. There, I mean, there's. There's three different bodies that are. Are stakeholders of this. I, in addition to the applicant, there's. The planning commission that has our interests and, and the city's interests. There's. Uh, the city council that have come up with new stuff and then there's. Planning staff, so I, this. This is a, quite a juggling act we're doing, uh.
And if you watch the city council, um, these conditions weren't brought up. I watched it twice, so I'm just letting you know.
Can I interject something real quick? Completely off topic, but my son's trying to get in and he says the door is locked. Can someone let him in? Okay, thanks.
All right.
That was out of line.
Sorry.
Go ahead, uh, Commissioner Jensen.
Yes, I had some questions about the intent, just to make sure that we understand it or that the language doesn't need to be. Yes, I had some questions about the intent, just to make sure that we understand it or that the language doesn't need to be refined. Um in the parking and access section on page five of the staff report. It says. All parking spaces shall be designed in accordance with sections fourteen point three seven point one oh um. So that means no dirt or gravel. So we're in an agricultural area and we're saying all the access roads had to be paved, correct?
Yeah, uh yeah.
I guess that's just parking spaces, so we're not just pulling into a field and putting up some orange cones. This is an official parking.
Up mud and things like that.
Okay. Um in the design standard section, number two. It says the design and architecture should be consistent with the agricultural setting. Um how? Is that determined or verified? At what stage of the process of application is is that standard determined and verified?
So yeah, so that concept plan that would come with this rezon request um in the future would go in front of the D R C. And there's definitely some discretion, some discretion and subjectivity to that, but.
Okay, so a divi- design review committee and city staff would have. Their opinions weighed in on what that looks like in each situation.
Right, I I imagine we would go and take photos of the the property that's requesting the zone. Um and have those in addition to the renderings provided.
Like a surrounding area?
Yeah.
Okay, um is are these hours of operation being suggested in the next section? Are they the same as curfew and quiet hours in neighborhoods, like the police mandated quiet hours?
Um I I believe so. They're consistent with uh dance hall uh in the in the business license chapter.
Okay. It just seemed like it made good sense to me to have those line up. I also wondered what the reason was. Was it a health and safety reason for the fifty foot? Um distance requirement away from animals and.
Yes.
Is that is that somewhere in a health code or is that something that someone determined would be safe? Like, I'm just wondering where we get that from so we can have some teeth in it.
You know, I didn't I didn't pull that from a health code. I think we kind of just took some measurements on the map and.
Okay, that might be helpful.
Yeah.
Just to have um some sort of making it measurable, making it. This is what is a good standard of health and safety. I'm just a suggestion. Um and then I just wanted to point out, I guess maybe this is more for later, but you can interject if I'm wrong. We've talked recently about some other event halls in downtown. Or in commercial zones in the city that were having um. Problems with with this similar style event that had that were required to have um. Security guards and and other things implemented in order to continue having their business, so. Even though it might not be in the code, it's not an unusual requirement, so for whatever that's worth.
Yeah, just to note, the the reason I think we brought that up is in the months uh. Proceeding the applicant's application, the um. A dance hall was having their uh business license revoked, their their use, their conditional use. Revoked um zoning because of uh. Security issues, safety issues, anyways. Commissioner, what?
Uh yeah, yeah, I just had a couple of quick questions. I was curious about when we did uh had had our last meeting. And we were looking at this uh under the conditional use requirements. There was a security requirement, correct? And it was it one per fifty or one or did this did it say the same?
It it wasn't uh, it wasn't numerical at that point.
It wasn't.
That came in through the discussions with Kenton and council.
Okay, I was trying to remember that, okay, and then um. Just from like a point of process, uh should we hold till the discussion for any thoughts or feedback?
Yeah, yeah, this is uh focusing on questions to. Staff.
So in earlier on, and I don't remember this myself, but it does say, I mean, later on on page seven, it says. Uh our suggestion was require security for events that have live music works in past ten P M. And but this was, this is when an event is held past nine P M. Which is one hour before the last allowable, you know, operations. I'm wondering why um it was moved to nine P M and if you have any information that this was based on about like what days of the week are more. If there are any that are more problematic or what what, you know, are there statistics on time time of day that that cuts off? Is that where you? Came up with this? I just wanna know the background.
Again, background on that, uh these zones are surrounded typically by residential neighborhoods uh with children going to sleep, school days, things like that. Uh Fridays, Saturdays, not as big of a deal because there's no school next day, so we extend it a little later. And again, those are consistent with uh other requirements in business licensing.
I sorry, I don't think I explained uh maybe, cause I feel like that's not the answer I was looking for. Um so the event can be held till ten P M on weekdays. And eleven P M on Friday and Saturday. We had said the security, we suggested the security should be for events past ten P M. And so it that nine to ten hour having the security required. Or that would cause the security, trigger the security to be required is because of school. Hours, even though the music and everything else, the operations is still extended till ten P M.
Right, right, we think it would be better maintained and policed if there's actually some.
Yeah, go ahead.
First of all, I think uh staff's done a really great job of trying to mesh this, the concerns that we had before. With these different use cases, um we actually had talked about, at least in the. Proposed language, a minimum of two security personnel to be on site to manage entrance of vehicles and parking during any event. I remember. A lot of discussion about that. Well, what if we bring kids out here for uh high uh school, an elementary school field trip or something? Do we have to have security personnel there? And so I think staff's done a great job of trying to identify, you know, what the real needs are and and trying to propose those for the right kinds of events, so. I think that's great. The one thing I didn't see that that was proposed, well, there's several things, but one that I thought was interesting was the lighting. There was a a can a proposed condition in the first round that lighting shouldn't disperse beyond the subject lot. And we don't see that in the in the new overlay zone. I'm just curious if that's.
That's that's already addressed in uh fifteen twenty one, chapter fifteen twenty one.
Okay.
Regulates already, so we didn't feel like we needed to repeat that.
That's it, thanks.
Any other questions for staff?
One real quick that just came to my mind, you know, in these agricultural zones for a long time, we've had things like corn mazes and. Other kind of fall events, harvest events. Do you imagine in the future that falling under this or because it's not an event hall at one?
No, those are already permitted by R I, so those can continue even without this.
Great.
I, yeah, I. I have you here, so I'm I'll just ask you, uh the. Just in reviewing the applicant's uh letter, when they brought up a list of venues that had. Options for events going till one A M. We probably already discussed this, but I just need a little more succinct statement, but are 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 those? Are those venues when they say they they go to midnight? And 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 one A M uh are are those places in violation of? I know there are different zones, they're in commercial zones, but are they in violation of? Is there some enforcement?
Let me let me look through chapter six when I sit down and and answer that.
Okay, yeah, it will recall you back up, yeah. Commissioner Kendall?
Um my understanding from what I've heard from the city is that. This is different than those venues because it's surrounded by residential.
Right.
And so a good comparison would be Wadley Farms. And Wadley Farms, you have to be out by ten P M. Period. Wadley Farms is in um Linden, surrounded by residential.
Um so I don't see any more questions for Mr. Ardmore, let's. Go ahead and uh invite the applicant up.
Oh, we are the applicant.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, uh so this is on the ordinance text amendment. Are there any district representatives present? Would like to speak? Okay, seeing on uh. The applicant, I'm I'm doing this all out of order. The applicant, um would you please come up? It's getting late. I'm gonna open this up to public comment, uh public hearing portion. It's been a long night, forgive me.
Before you start my two minutes, who's paying the babysitting? Are we babysitting you or are you babysitting?
Uh yeah, go ahead, uh if if you could just speak to some of the. Issues that were brought up by the different commissioners and and we we've read your li- I've read your letter, I I I trust that. My fellow commissioners have. If you're not able to get everything you can in in two minutes, we'll, I think we'll ask you questions that might give you more time.
Thank you, um I guess I would just say this, that, oh, my name is Barry Finch, I live in Provo down west end. I guess I would just say this, that you guys are tasked to. Try to make good decisions with people with various issues coming before you. But I think this is a case study for not how it should not work in that. Uh somebody mentioned the goalpost keeps getting moved. We were told, this is seven months that we've been doing this. We've been told that the the only way to do this was was a zone amendment. And in order to do that, we felt like we had to negotiate. And so we negotiated. I've never personally gone to a wedding that's had a security. I never have, doubt I ever will, but we negotiated that. We felt like that's something we could do. And as a business owner, I would say that it makes sense many times to have security. But that's a business decision. That's a business decision. If I'm having fights and police coming all the time, my neighborhood isn't gonna put up with it. My customers are gonna review me on internet and the market's gonna work that out. We've heard that all night long, the market's gonna work that out. If my place stinks, the market's gonna work that out. If my place is trashy, it's gonna work its way out. And so I would just say that, please don't move the goalposts. We we no longer are asking for an amendment to the zone. That will have this citywide application, which was what you guys said was the concern. Liked the idea, didn't like the methodology. That's the same thing that the city council said. Liked seven to zero in favor of the project, but didn't like the com- uh the way we were doing it. Well, the way we were doing it is the way the staff suggested. So now we're doing this uh a different way. So to put us, I think, in an unfair advantage. With our competitors, if someone else can stay open till midnight, we.
No, I'm I'm sorry. Um is there another member from the public, please? Thank you.
Judy Finch, Provo. I have concerns about the conditional uses in this overlay zone. In Provo City General Plan for the West Side, it says to encourage agritourism. It also says to remove obstacles to the success of agritourism. The city council has agreed and requir- and requested staff to come up with agritourism overlay zone to help farmers. To have additional avenues for to create income. The city council also has mandated that the zone overlay would be less restrictive than a zone amendment because the city has more control. Over a zone overlay. I feel the following restrictions written in this overlay put agritourism at a disadvantage compared to other businesses. Uh control of hours of operation in a business. Uh set their own hours like grocery stores, theaters, clubs, wedding venues. Research I did show that wedding venues in Provo don't have a city mandated hour of operation. Um security, I did, the research I did show that wedding venues in Provo do not have a city mandated security. Some chose to have security if alcohol is served, but no other reason. Distant uh requirements, this overlay is for existing farms. If they choose to build the barn venue on their on their farm, it could very easily border existing buildings. That may have animals. Having a fifty feet distant requirement could cause obstacles to the success of the business. It could force farmable land being used for the venue instead of a farmyard that is already dedicated to buildings. I would ask the staff to remove these conditional uses in this agritourism zone overlay. Wadley Farms has, only has security when alcohol is served by their choice. They have live music and they go to ten without security. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny Finch. Anyone else from the public that would like to comment? Please come forward.
My name's Scott Christofferson. I live in Provo. Close to the Finch Farm uh. Mainly just planned to come tonight to see what was going on with this. And I wasn't planning on speaking, but as I've watched how the events have went through tonight. I felt like I should say something like these event. Buildings. What type of events are gonna be held here? Are they gonna be concerts? Is this gonna be a USANA type thing? Is there gonna be? Uh is it for more like, you talked about animal rights, i- is there gonna be horse shows or? Maybe somebody can just explain a little to me of what the usage of this is gonna be for. Somebody?
Let me, let me go ahead. I'm gonna invite uh staff, uh Mr. Ardmore. Yeah, what did you, are there any other questions you have that you you'd like?
Well, yes, there is. The other items, maybe I'll discuss that when we get to item nine.
Okay.
But uh. Yeah, my main concern with with item A is it says approval for a four lot subdivision. Subdivision of what? Is it gonna be? Okay. All right, well, I'll sit down for a minute and you guys can continue.
Uh I'm I'm gonna note just on the, wh- what's up on the screen. Uh permitted uses would be commercial tours. Agricultural tours. Educational classes, museums and event halls. What I understood the event halls to be contemplated were weddings. Kitaniera type things, uh family parties, maybe reunions. Dances, concerts, and they're they're limited based on their building size. Uh and and code and then uh parking. And that's what they're they're limited to, but um I'll have Mr. Ardmore uh. Address that if if you have anything else to add.
That's exactly right, yeah. Event hall, um anything you you can imagine going into the zone. Uh that could follow these conditions, right? Um but like you say, uh building code, fire, egress code and parking availability would determine some of that as well. So yes, uh a variety of things could be thought of in an event hall. Um getting back to your question on the hours, um other businesses in the city downtown, for example. Uh Sunday through Friday, they have to cease at one A M, Saturday they have to cease at one thirty A M.
So that's a, that's a downtown zone that allows one P M, not not necessarily other commercial zones.
Right. I think that's it.
That 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 answers my question as far as that. That gap or discrepancies. Anyone else here from the public? I I don't see any other, unless you're stunned. Does anyone else wanna recall staff or recall anyone else for additional questions? Commissioner Kendall?
I have a question for staff about the fifty foot distance that was discussed. What are your feelings?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Uh we'll go ahead and close public comment. We're we're discussing amongst ourselves, but we're also reserved the right to recall uh individuals as needed. Go ahead, Commissioner Kendall.
So I would just like to hear your feelings about the fifty foot distance, the importance of that, pros and cons.
So I would just like to hear your feelings about the fifty foot distance, the importance of that, pros and cons. How firm do you feel about that and why?
Um, the number of fifty, I, I think that could take some more research and, and that number could change. I think there is a really important, um, idea there in separating feed, waste, animals from an event hall. Uh, if you could think of all the different events that would be had in an event hall with food, drink. Um, I think you'd want to separate those uses. Um, fifty might not be the right number. And I think staff could go back and look at, uh, some research on that between now and the city council.
Go ahead, um, Mr. Hill.
So with that, I mean, is it enough perhaps just to say it's not the same building, right? If there's a wall partitioning that, is that enough to create that separation? Something to look at.
Right, I will look at that.
With that, along with that, we've seen several concerns come up with the security with other event halls not being required to have security, et cetera. Can you comment on that? And if they aren't required, why require it here when we don't have it places?
I think that, um, has been, uh, a mistake in, in specifically dance halls in the city. Um, we've seen problems come when there's no security on site. Um, not only in the venue, but in the parking lot of the venue. So I think moving forward, we want to correct that mistake.
Or, are there any pending or anticipated ordinance text amendments with, uh, as they apply to dance halls? For a security requirement for other zones?
We haven't, we haven't looked at that because their conditional use permits, if there are issues, those can be revoked. When it's something like this and granted through the zone itself, we want to make sure that's, that's in there because once you give the zone, it's, it's pretty difficult to take it back.
Yeah, I, I wanted to say thank you for, to staff for, um, putting the work into this. I think it's been a long running discussion and I, what I see here is definitely a lot of inputs that were given by the planning commission. Incorporated that, so that was, that's, you know, really appreciate that. Good, good work. Um. Uh, I do have just like a couple thoughts on the margins around some of these things, uh, that I would like to share. So first one is around the requirements for security. I think you're right. I mean, we had the issue with El Fuego Fridays. I think we've learned from experience that when there's alcohol, uh, in a club-like environment, that you do need security on staff. And I think that, you know, the one per seventy-five adults incorporates some of the, you know, some of the, uh, feedback from last meeting and it's less strict than I think what we were talking about, what we're talking about too. So I think that's good, but, uh, the, the, kind of the couple like just quibbles I'd have is like live music. Um, if someone is playing their guitar in the room, I don't, I, I, I wonder if you like, say like amplified live music or a band. I just, I think what we're trying to get at there is like, there is a, there is a loud band-like music happening that kind of creates that raucous environment, not like something like a quinceañera playing a little Spanish guitar. I don't know, I just feel like there's, that's like kind of a little overly broad. That's my opinion on that one. And then the other one, or a piano exactly, like if it's a wedding, someone could be playing a piano and that's technically live music. And I don't think that really should require security personally.
That's a good note.
Um, the other just small quibble I'd have is like, um, the nine PM feels like maybe ten, but I, I get it. So that's, that's one that maybe feels a little stricter. We could maybe relax this a little bit, but overall I understand the need for security. Um, wanted to give positive feedback on, I think previously we were talking about ten, we moved it to five. I feel like that was a reasonable accommodation to make this more viable, so I appreciate that. Um, under, uh, fourteen zero eight A seventy on building standards, the number two feels great. Really love that. Um, that was like a, a good addition. Number one, I kind of again wonder if it's just a little too broad because it's like, I mean, I know what we're getting at, but it's like, can can I not put bill, you know, metal trusses inside whether or not visible? Like, I, I just feel like it feels like you can't use metal at all, feels like.
I think that I could rewrite that to say, um, non-agricultural metal.
Yeah, exactly. Something like that. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly. Yes. Um, I, I, I think that would help. And then I'm just looking through my notes. Um. Uh, I have a small note where I, I do feel like if it's the proper grade, gravel should be a permitted parking. I think that's, in my experience, going to these kind of agribusiness events, it's very common. There's a business down in Arizona I frequented a lot growing up called, uh, Schneff Farms and they had large, uh, gravel-based parking lots that were well-maintained. It just, you can't have overly grade, so it gets muddy. So I, I would like to see potentially that permission for this zone. I think it's, it goes along with the look and feel of what we're trying to accomplish. Um, those are my primary points of feedback.
Mr. Ardmore, you, you could probably sit down. I think we're kind of discussing this, uh. Sorry, thanks. Uh. I'll, I'll reserve my thoughts. I, I'd love to hear more from anyone. Commissioner DeSoto?
Yeah, I, I agree about the live music. I think that maybe being specific to concerts where the point of it is to be there and it's going to be loud, maybe that would be the solution to that. Where maybe a wedding and having a little jazz band is could be quiet and naturally orderly because it's a family-oriented event. But once you get to maybe concerts and it's adults and there's alcohol, definitely, um, has a different situation. Um, so I would just suggest that. And I still also feel the, the change from ten PM, security required past nine PM. I mean, I feel like it's only one hour difference and it's to closing time. I feel like on a weeknight, maybe it's more important. I don't know. I just wonder about that.
No, there's a huge difference between a string quartet and a, and a concert.
Yeah, I have some comments.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Hill.
So first of all, I want to say that as someone who worked on the West Side Plan years ago, we had all these debates because the, the city council had said, hey, we want to preserve agriculture in the city. We kept looking at it and we kept saying, how in the world are we going to do that, right? And it's great to see kind of a plan coming together that's going to allow, um, some of that agriculture out there to be preserved um, and used in a way that is compatible with a growing urban city in the area, right? So I like that. Um, couple of comments, some of these have been commented already. Um, as far as the security, I mean, yeah, there's a difference between a, you know, string quartet and a loud band. Um, but at the same time too, I think maybe security, we should be there if it's a DJ playing recorded music, right? Um, if it's a concert, dance, ruckus, kind of loud type thing. And so I think there should be some work to reconfigure that to account for what we're really trying to accomplish there. I personally would just remove the time requirement on the security because I think alcohol and type of activity is way more important than what time of day it is when it's there. Um, I'd love to see more work on the fifty foot, um, requirement, just to see what is the right one. I do understand the need for health and safety for that, but what is that number? I think it needs to be adjusted. Back to number, not just one we picked. Um, and then finally, um, I would love to see a little more review and thought into the time so that we are not creating a disadvantage with other types of event halls in the city, but at the same time, we are balancing what the, you know, neighborhood needs are, et cetera. Um, I feel like maybe tendering the week probably is the right time. Um, maybe eleven Friday, Saturday, but maybe midnight might be a more appropriate time, um, on the weekends. Um, just to try to help make sure that these businesses can be viable and successful as well. So overall, I really like the idea of how we're putting this together.
For whatever it's worth, I disagree with making it go later. I think we need to remember if this were around the corner from my house, I would be very cranky if I like, I can hear parties downtown after eleven o'clock at my house and that makes me cranky. If it was any closer, I would be, I'd feel like it wasn't right for the neighborhood. So we have to remember this is an exception. This is a special allowance. And so there's going to be special rules that someone that at a commercial location or downtown location doesn't have.
Yeah, there's absolute, uh, this, this is distinguishable from the the other dance halls that were mentioned and event halls, uh, because it's a, it's in a different zone. It's in a different zone. It's in a different part of the city. Uh, the surrounding uses are completely different.
Well, if I can push back just a little bit.
Yeah, go ahead.
Let's not pretend nobody lives downtown, right? Yeah, the zone is different, but there still are residents who care about noise, et cetera, et cetera. And we haven't felt the need to do it there. And yet we feel a need to do it here. And so I don't know. I mean, maybe the answer is we need to do a better job downtown at dictating these kinds of things, but there are people that live there too.
I think the difference is when you move downtown, you know that you're moving to a place that allows those uses. When you move into the rural area on the west side or the, the sparsely populated residential areas, you expect a different level of peace and quiet. And that's already written in the code when you when you invest. So.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with, with making noise restrictions, but I'm also a fireworks hater, so you can hold that against me.
And I, and I don't have a problem with the noise downtown. People, if they don't know it, they, they should that there's concerts downtown. There's, University Avenue was, has one of the highest traffic counts in, in the city. Uh. I mean, it, it
People coming out of the temple, they are loud.
They're loud. They're very loud.
Trains are loud, like it's just, it's a louder environment. So I, I think we need to remember that. That's why there's an overlay zone so we can bring in a different set of standards because it's a different land use.
Cause, cause a lot of the, a lot of the remaining agriculture, at least that, there's pockets of remaining agriculture, you know, scattered throughout the city that are in, you know, R1 type zoning, single family. It's different.
I know, and, uh, I'm just riffing here. I know this might be an annoying comment, but I wonder if like, I kind of wonder if the event halls is actually like a little bit too broad of a category for what we're trying to do here because of the concert permitted use. Like, I think if you think about the original applicant, um, it's more like family gatherings, weddings, not necessarily concerts. I think concerts is what really makes this like, I totally get it. Like, if you're having a concert in an agriculture area and it's going to, uh, eleven PM, I think even that's going to be kind of annoying, honestly, for a lot of residents. But, so I, I, I wonder if there's like a repurposing of like, of the dance hall, because I know we're doing it because we can pull in all that like code for the da- event halls, but it's just a thought.
So is there a separate land use code for wedding reception halls versus dance halls or event venues?
You could recommend that we say event halls accept concerts, something like that in the language.
I agree, uh, something like that. Or if, if, yeah, if we don't want them concerts at all. Some concerts could be quiet, but, um, for me, it was just that all live music triggers security when I feel like it's concert, like really that's the, that is the event is music is the problem more than just that there might be incidental live music to the main event being a wedding or a family reunion.
I, I want to try and move to a little bit of consensus to where we get a motion. Um, I expect that there will be some additional alterations or conditions. And what I'm sensing is that, uh, uh, striking on fourteen zero eight A one hundred event hall requirements that, um, maybe striking the live music event in, in, in consideration of the, the types of music that might be performed there. And then, uh, changing the time to, from nine PM to ten PM.
Um, or getting rid of it. Cause ten PM is closing most of the time and it's one hour left, so that's, I just don't know if time matters at that point.
Just striking no security, uh, secure, time doesn't trigger security. It's alcohol that triggers.
Yeah, just leaving alcohol.
And concerts, which you could just get rid of entirely. Yeah, exactly.
Right? I'm seeing the applicant nod that that's probably acceptable. So that sure makes it cleaner, I would imagine for the city going forward to be able to separate that out also in these zones. Can I make some comments?
Yes, please, go ahead.
My thoughts. So I really appreciate that the city was willing to do this because I think this gets to the exact thing we're trying to do, help preserve agricultural land. And yet the city has the opportunity to, um, approve each one. Everybody has to come and ask for the overlay and then also, uh, show a concept plan. So that gives protection to the city. Um, I don't think we need to worry about it being successful. Wadley Farms proves that kicking everybody out by ten PM works just fine for weddings. I mean, you know, I, I know there are few groups where wedding parties go longer, but most people are out of there. It's, it's fine. It's done and they'll be quite successful. So if they need to go later, they'll pick a different venue. But, um, you can hardly get into Wadley Farms. They're so busy. So, so I think that, you know, to say this is different because it is, um, surrounded by residential neighborhoods is very valid and should be treated differently because of that. Um, I would really love to see some concrete, um, idea about the fifty foot distance so we can come up with something that's acceptable and, uh, meets the uh, health and safety and welfare requirements, but isn't burdensome to the applicant. Um, I, so I think everything else really is good. I, I also agree with the change of the building material to metal not permitted on the facade. And, um, I also agree with the gravel concept. Again, Wadley Farms has gravel. And if it's the right consistency, you don't end up with mud. And, um, I just think that's helpful because then animals and whatever else can also be moved through those areas as necessary and.
And frankly, it preserves the agricultural feel much better than a massive paved parking lot.
I agree with that. Um, let's see. Okay, so I, I would say as far as security, only if alcohol is served. Um, I don't even have a problem with, only if the applicant feels that that is necessary, but if the city wants to, I understand the city's concern that you can't revoke the use in this case. And so it would be better to build in that protection. So I agree with that. Okay, those were my thoughts.
I hope someone's taking notes as far as conditions and making.
Well, what I just heard, what I just heard Commissioner Kendall say was that basically, um, fourteen point oh eight A point one hundred could not have A, B, and C. It could just have, event hall shall provide one privately contracted and licensed onsite security per seventy-five adult patrons when alcohol is served. That's what I heard because we're saying, we're going to say somewhere else that live music concerts are not actually going to be allowed at an event hall in an agricultural zone. And we don't think the time matters. That is, was what I heard Ms., Ms. Kendall say.
We don't think the time matters for security, but we'd still, I would still adhere to the time.
Right, still the deadline, but as far as security goes, I think we could get rid of items A and B and not have the, a bulleted list there and just say, we want you to have security one per seventy-five participants if alcohol is served.
I want to go back to Commissioner Hill's comment though, but what about, what about a dance and a DJ? And you've got, you know, some kind of party going on or whatever without alcohol and it's going right up to midnight. And you've got three hundred people there. Do they need to have security there? Right? I mean, I, I think there's still our conditions and I also want to return to the, the comment about, we're making um, this, this, uh, agritourism overlay zone applicable for lots of different uses. And I know we've got one applicant who's a great example of this and has brought it forward, but this could also go other locations. So we just need to be careful that we don't try to make it specific to what we think this is going to be and it really is the overlay zone.
That's, well, that's why I liked her suggestion of not having a concert because I feel like that's not something you want in any adjacent to a residential area and neighborhood.
Yeah, that's what people will hate about this is, is concert, with concerts and DJs late, playing loud, loud music. Like if, I think if you get rid of that, this will be much more palatable for everyone.
And it's not midnight anyway. It's eleven PM.
How do you define though a concert?
Versus a dance with a DJ.
Quartet at a wedding. I mean, what's the difference?
Yeah, like, like every wedding, lots of weddings have DJs, uh, if there's a dance at the wedding. But it's not a dance, like it's not a, a dance where they're charging admission to people from the public.
Well, we've also got very popular venues that are like a country swing dance lesson. And they've got a DJ and they've got music and they've got wild and crazy people swinging themselves around.
I'm just a little bit nervous about the, um, you don't need security unless alcohol is served. Because some venues won't be able to qua- qualify for liquor license because of where they're located next to a school or next to a church. And with certain types of venues or uses, people may be bringing in their own alcohol. So I would be really nervous about that general category of if there's no alcohol being served.
And that's why maybe those other limitations were placed in there because I remember that was part of the other one we dealt with. other one we dealt with with the condition conditional use permit. They weren't serving alcohol, but people were going out in the parking lot getting alcohol and causing a problem in the on the property, even though it wasn't inside the venue.
Right.
But couldn't you, could you say if alcohol is being consumed on the premise and then make the owner responsible for that? Because they'd lose their license if uh if the police find alcohol there and there isn't security?
Uh, well, again, how would we know that that's going on if there's not security there? Or are we going to rely on their security to let us know that alcohol is being consumed?
I guess my argument would be that if there is an incident in which alcohol is involved, then the business owner would be liable for that because they did not have per security on staff. Like, if there's an incident in the property and the police show up and there's alcohol involved and there is not security, it's on the business owner to ensure that that's happening or they lose their business license.
Okay.
Assuming that reporting is taking place, is that where your chin rubbing is coming from?
Yes.
That communication is hard to come by?
And the burden of having to send the police out. It's, I mean, a lot of this is because of a situation you're aware of where we had in order to matter, police calls to that venue. As far as the this music and a quartet versus a rock band, let us give some thought to that, because I agree, we should not treat both of those the same. Yeah.
Is it possible to put like a decibel measurement in?
That's one way we could do it, yes. I mean, that's something that is definitely measurable, so that's one thing we could try to do, yeah. And there is actually a standard in the nuisance ordinance about what that decibel level is.
I wonder if there's also a possibility of saying if the music is not the main event, it's just a small part of the event, like it's a part of the event.
Ancillary to the event.
Exactly, but it's like the event would still go on whether the band showed up or not, right?
Yeah.
Somebody could put on their iPhone and put on some music like, you know, but that the con- that's the concert idea or um.
But what what about a dance with a live folk band playing swing music? Like, that's a legitimate. Where does that fall on the spectrum?
I would think that would be the main.
It would be the main function, yeah. And but do we want to discourage that in an agricultural zone? That seems like a perfect use for some of these.
I don't think you'd want to discourage it. You could do both. You could have a decibel level and you could say it should be just, you know, not the main purpose.
Right.
Either or, right?
One other thing I think we should consider about the security also is this is going to be, these these locations are going to be more remote, and so access to emergency services is likely to be more difficult to come by.
So more important to have this security.
Yeah, I mean, the event that we're talking about, it was right downtown and they had multiple police calls and the police were close and they were monitoring it because they were, this was happening frequently. Had this out in a in a more resident or rural area, this can be a little bit more difficult.
But at the same time, I don't want to overindex on that thing because that event is specifically a club. It's a club that happens once a week on Friday nights. I don't think that is what we are intending like to permit or allow to happen in this use, so I'd rather design this such that that use is not permitted at all than say, oh, it's gonna happen anyway, so we might as well have security there. That's kind of where I would come from in this.
I I agree with that, and I think that's what the city's saying, too, that once we grant something, we can't take this one away. Conditional use permits you can take away, but this one, it's gonna be harder if somebody's doing something, so it's better to get it straight from the beginning, because it's gonna be harder to take away the use.
Well, do event halls include dance clubs, or is there a distinction where opening a dance club that's doing dances every week would violate that?
There's a specific distinction in Provo.
So two different land use codes? So you can say event hall and not have it be a dance hall?
Dance halls, that's completely separate.
What about um like velour? Where does that fall?
Velour?
The music place?
Yeah, I'd have to look up to see what then.
Because that could also be very loud if you had people migrating to the wilderness to have their.
My guess is it's probably an event hall, if I had to guess.
Right, and I'm saying that I think from what we just said, that that's not what we want to see.
Exactly, yeah.
So double check that.
Okay.
Well, you could you could solve it with a decibel, right? So, I mean, you could have, you could have it as long as it wasn't too loud. Would that be okay? If there's no alcohol consumption and it's not too loud, would that be an acceptable thing if there was you know, something going on of that nature? So that would be your your western swing dance or, you know. But I guess western swing dance, it would, that's more of a dance hall use. So that would not be permitted anyway, right?
Except for maybe on occasion.
I we're we're seeing a lot, I mean.
There's a lot of crossover.
Wedding hall just has, brings in a lot of a lot of cross uses where you have the intersection of music and dancing and and then the actual event, the uh.
Wild and crazy people.
Yeah.
Hooting and hollering.
I think you're starting to see uh the difficulty that staff has had with this.
Yeah.
Um, you can really get into the weeds on all the ifs and buts. Um, and it's it's an experiment, all right? This is new to the Provo city, so we want to get it right. Uh, we might have to come back and fix it as it happens, um, but as close as right as we can get on this first try is is gonna be good, so. Any suggestions you have for us to take to the city council? We we would love to hear them in your motion, um. But yeah.
I mean, I'm really intrigued by this decibel idea, because I feel like that's what the neighbors are concerned about, too, is loud noise, right?
But I'm back to undoing what I restated what I thought Commissioner Kendall was saying and saying let's leave all of A, B, and C in there because I'd rather be more restrictive and take it out than wish we had done it better. And just send this to the council with all the restrictions in place with our list of concerns and how to refine the use and the measurement of the use. And have staff go to them with with more details based on what we've said, but not making it more permissive right off the bat until we know why fifty feet from the animals and and what the appropriate decibel level is and what the different land use codes are for the different possibilities.
Yeah, I I think city council will really want to hear your suggestions, your concerns, your recommendations as they have a very similar discussion as we're having probably.
I I think if we're gonna put I I'm I'm gathering the my impression is the uh the commissioners are leaning towards approval of the ordinance text amendment with the following conditions, and and we could, you know, enumerate those conditions uh for further study, um. And uh, or further discussion or or discuss them as part of the uh discussion on the motion.
Unless we want it to come back to us before it goes to council, which i- if we have enough concerns, I don't think that's unrealistic either.
There's enough going on right now that that may be preferable for staff.
I would love to see the the narrowing of possibilities brought to us before we feel comfortable sending it to the city council.
I agree.
Do we need to enumerate a list so we know what to bring it back with?
I I if if this is gonna, if someone's gonna move to continue, I I want a list of of study items.
Okay.
But I I'm I'm open to hearing any uh recommendations for approval, denial, continuance, uh approval with conditions. I'm I'm open to anything. Go ahead.
I I think that probably continuance, and this is the list of things that I think there has been a fair amount of discussion. Of course, we didn't do a vote on each of these items. But one is was the metal facade, changing it from building materials facade. Two was um reevaluating the distance of fifty feet, getting a little bit uh clear on why that, and is it possible to potentially be a little bit.
Measurable.
Yeah, uh potentially being less distant so that it's more, it's less burdensome on business owners while still accomplishing the needs of uh food safety. Three was the security requirements. Um, seems like there's some disagreement among uh the commission about it, but uh some some uh of us think that it would be less, uh would not be needed if if you were to get rid of um the associated factors that are uh increased risk factors for security, such as concerts, loud music, et cetera, and then you could just limit it to alcohol on premise. And then the fourth was uh in- investigating whether gravel could be a permitted parking uh surface area.
I would add to that defining um how we measure the the sound level, the the live music versus D J versus concert versus
Yeah.
ancillary use, you know, like, how do we word that so that it captures all the concerns about the noise level? Did that get it all? Okay, I'll make a motion.
All right, go ahead.
I move that we continue. Item number seven, Development Services requests approval of an ordinance text amendment to adopt an agritourism overlay zone. Um, citywide application, um, subject to staff bringing back a document that addresses the list of concerns we just enumerated.
There are discussion on the motion? There's second on the motion.
I'll second.
Oh, let's go ahead and vote. Uh, motion to continue. Uh, Commissioner Newsom.
Aye.
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 Uh, motion continue, uh passes unanimously nine zero. Go ahead.
Thank you. Your rules say that you don't take any new items after nine o'clock unless you make a motion to do that. Because your next meeting will not be a public hearing. It'll be a study session only with the city council. Uh, if you don't do items eight and nine tonight, it would have to wait a month. My impression is that items eight and nine are will be pretty quick and noncontroversial. They're pretty simple. They're pretty straightforward. Staff sees no real controversy with them, so I would ask the planning commission if you would consider taking these items, even though they'd be starting after nine o'clock. You'll have to make a motion and vote on that if you decide to do that.
And we don't have a, we don't have a problem like approving these before we address the zone, the ordinance text.
It's not even related.
It's not, oh, okay. These, these are independent.
All these are, these are independent, just addressing the lots.
Yeah. Right.
Uh, and the zone change of the that one of those, okay, uh. I'm not, I'm I'm not opposed to that. Uh, is anyone opposed to hearing items? Number eight and nine, I think we have the applicants here. I I think we could get through it pretty quickly.
They've waited this whole time. We have to do it for them.
For the record, they've been here since five fifteen.
Yeah, yeah. So I I make a motion that we extend uh and hear items eight and nine.
I'll second.
Um, just, I'm just gonna up down vote, uh. Who, who?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's, I'm seeing everybody, I think, everybody, yeah. Uh, let's go ahead with item number eight. Judy and Barry Finch request concept plan approval for a four lot subdivision in the R A zone and the A one one, one point one zone on ten point six four acres of property at three five eight south, twenty four seventy west, Provo Bay neighborhood. Uh, Mr. Ardmore.
And if you could read it.
And item number nine, Judy and Barry Finch request a zone map amendment from the R A zone to the A one point one zone for four point three two acres of the property at three five eight south, twenty four seventy west from the A point one one zone to the R A zone for point five acres at three ten south, twenty four seventy west, Provo Bay neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll try to be brief. Uh, so, okay, so here's the property. Uh, that's in question for the subdivision in the B zone. I think the most helpful slide is gonna be this one. Uh, you can see the current zoning on the left is uh A one on the north, which is all one parcel. And then there's two parcels in the R A zone, the central home at three fifty six and and three fifty eight there. Um, so to try to correct these issues of having kind of uh, the use is not matching up with the zones and in an effort to uh clean up the property lines and and planning for the future uses, uh, the proposed zoning is to uh, take the all the agricultural property into the A one zone and put the three homes into the R A zone. Uh, each of the three homes would be on uh at least a half acre lot, which is the minimum for R A zone, uh, so that fits. They would be able to maintain their animal rights. And the A one lot four would um be able to maintain its agricultural uses and meets all the lot standards and and issues with that one. Um, so staff has no issue, no concerns uh with this proposal. Uh, we recommend approval uh to the planning commissioners and council.
Thank you, Mr. Ardmore. Any questions for Mr. Ardmore? I'm not seeing any, uh. We'll go ahead and uh invite the district representative.
Applicant.
Uh, I'm, gosh goodness. Mr. Finch, uh, would you like to come up? No further dis- okay. He's waving his right to speak on these two items. Uh, district representative is not here or any other members of the public. Wait, we do have. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up for public comment. Um, we have a gentleman that's uh been waiting to appear and address these items number eight and nine. This is on the the rezone of those lots from consolidating them. Please uh state your name and.
My name is Scott Christopherson, and I am a West Provo resident. And from what I gather from this view here, the zoning of the of the area is gonna pretty much kind of stay the way it is now, isn't it? Yeah. Okay, that I can understand that. And uh that was one of my main concerns. I just don't, when I was discussing the four zone or yeah, the four zone subdivision or four lot, now that explains to me what they meant by four lot. So my concern with that has been addressed and uh I'm still at odds about about these halls and what's gonna take place in them and what where they may be located in the plot. And I don't know, possibly Mr. Finch would discuss that with me personally, just to maybe put to rest any of my concerns. All right. Okay, continue on. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Christopherson, for your patience and waiting, and we appreciate that. I'm not seeing any other public comment, um. Close the public comment, public hearing portion, uh. Any discussion on the on the two items?
This makes way more sense. I love it when we get opportunities to clean up the zoning. It's great.
Any further discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and I, let's hear your motion. I'll make a motion. Item number eight, uh. Uh. I move to that we approve the item number eight proposed Jerry and Booty, Jerry, oh, gosh. Judy and Barry Finch request concept plan approval for a four lot subdivision in the R A red zone and and the A one point one zone on ten point six four acre plan, subject to approval of the related. That we recommend approval of the proposed zone map amendments to city council. Item number nine, Judy and Barry Finch request a zone map amendment from the R A zone to the A one point one zone for four point three two acres of property at three fifty eight south, twenty four seventy west from the A one point one zone to the R A zone for point five acres at three one zero south, twenty four seventy west, Provo Bay neighborhood. Any discussion on the motion? Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, uh, let's vote on it. Uh, Commissioner Newsom.
Aye.
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 Uh, motion passes uh nine zero. Uh, this concludes. Yeah, uh.
I move that we end our meeting.
I second that.
Okay, uh, is there a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll adjourn, um. Yeah, thank you all for your patience. Okay, we'll adjourn, um, yeah, thank you all for your patience.